I'd like to call for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Michelle, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Weinshof.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goddard. Councilmember Lacks.
Here.
Mayor Kohler.
Here.
Thank you.
And can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Test, one, two. This one's working. We can share ours.
All right, so announcement of closed session. I have nothing to report. And let me just read the meeting protocol. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the council has a responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at council meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and are ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cellular phones or place in the silent mode. I'd like to make a few announcements, but first, before I do that, as probably all of you know, we had a very tragic event on the outskirts of Fairfax. We had a homicide, and thankfully, the suspects were apprehended today in Oregon. It really is a wake-up call for all of us to be vigilant when we're out and about. If you see something suspicious, leave immediately and go to a well-populated place and call 911 immediately. We also need to remember to lock our doors. I know sometimes some of us leave the house and may leave our doors open, but just really take this as a note of caution. I also want to announce that for some of you who have followed this story, Mr. Carter and his wife moved here so his wife could undergo aggressive breast cancer treatment, and in addition to trying to raise money for that treatment, now Ms. Carter has to bury her husband. So there's a GoFundMe site, and I don't have the specific website, but her name is Loquita Carter, and it's GoFundMe. So for any of you who, probably small donations would be, you know, I'm sure they're just as welcome as larger donations, but I think it's going to be really difficult for her in this tragic time. So with that, I want to make a few regular announcements. Our Fairfax food pantry is Saturdays 9 to 11 at the Fairfax Community Church, 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Volunteers are always needed. For any of you who need food or your neighbors, nobody needs to show proof of need, just show up. It's a great place. So vacancies on boards and commissions. We have the volunteer board, tree committee, an open space committee, and the general plan implementation committee, and applications are available at town hall and on our town website, and you can contact our town clerk, Michelle Gardner, for information. Creek Cleanup and Nature Walk is October 10. It's 10:00 a.m. at the Community Youth Center, sponsored by our Fairfax volunteers, and if you can, show up with gloves, open-toed shoes, and if you have clippers, please bring those. So it's a... I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Goddard, for that good clarification. I would be there with my high-heeled sandals. And then volunteers on October 11 needed to help the Fairfax Gardeners Alliance beautify the center, boulevard, corridor from 9 to 3 on October 11. Just show up. And then, starting October 11, many of you read in the paper, our Fairfax Farmer's Market will be on Sundays, 10 to 2 p.m. in the library parking lot. We want to thank the county, that's county land, for approving that. So we're very grateful to have our Farmer's Market year-round. October 31 is the Chamber of Commerce Annual Halloween Parade, 5 to 7 p.m. starts at the Fairfax Theater. Along with that, many of you know that Dominga and Napa Avenue get inundated by children trick-or-treating. Yay! And in order to help these folks out who spend hundreds of dollars on candy, you can drop off candy donations for the Dominga neighborhood at our town hall up until October 30. And Ryan O'Neal, who used to be on the council, was a great council member, is willing to drop off the candy to folks on Dominga. So that's great. One more thing before I turn to Vice Mayor Goddard. We also have the Great Shakeout Drill. This is an earthquake drill. It's on the 15th of October at 10:15. Drop, cover, and hold. And you can check www.shakeout.org for more information. You can do it on your own. We're doing it in town hall for our folks, but it's good to practice. We never know when these things are going to come up. And Renee, did you have something to add?
Yes, I do. So on October 11, that is this Sunday, Sustainable Fairfax will be holding a bicycle tour of home rainwater catchment systems and gray water systems. So you can visit homes that have already installed these systems, learn hands-on how they were installed, look at models and examples, and as a special treat, John Wick from the Marin Carbon Project will be coming and discussing and describing the Marin Carbon Project, which if you don't know about, you should look it up online. You can go to sustainablefairfax.org to get more information and register for the bicycle tour. It's this Sunday from 10:30 to 3. Thank you.
Anyone else have other announcements? Seeing none. Okay, it's time for open time for public expression. There's a three-minute time limit per person, and this is if you wish to address items not on the agenda, and if you could state your name and address, if you feel comfortable doing so. And it looks like Sierra Salem.
Well, I don't really have to state my name. I guess you already know it. And for anybody here, this is from the Scoop, which is the best ice cream west of the Pecos, and I suggest it for anybody. So I've got a whole pile of meanderants, musings, and observations is unusual, and where to start? All kinds of places. I think we need some kind of rent control. Good luck. I don't know how to make it work so that it works for the tenants or the owners. All that I know is I look at Marin, where I happen to grow up, and it doesn't resemble much of anything besides a bunch of fairly white professional people that have overly large cars and drive in circles buying stuff, and then fly away on vacations in their greeny-green whatever. And that's just kind of who we are. Another aside from that, my son's home. He kind of injured himself, but I'm noticing he's not really hanging out with anybody. And as he says, "There's nobody here between 18 and 35." He wants to get back to Portland. I mean, look around at our community, folks. We're gray. We're old, you know? What kind of, what's our future? Which brings me over to the schools, which is a whole nother thing. You got, I've noticed a website the other day, Save Our Schools, which is in support of Ross Valley Schools, but no place on it does it say who's behind it. There's not one name. There's not one anything, and it's not a conversation. It's more just anonymous. I'm all for conversations, and that's in response to the MAP community going for charter status, which goes back to, look around. We're old and gray. What's our future? Our future is our children. Our children, our future is education. Do we support education? Do we support choice? Save Our Schools, yes, but what about choice? What about, how do we actually educate our children for who they are and not who we want them to be? That's something worth thinking about. And, you know, we don't want to just stuff them in a chair and tell them to sit down and shut up and learn. It's like, there needs to be choice. And it's like, it's a matter of funding, yes, but it's a matter of creativity and will, and just leadership. I think we need leadership all the way around. It goes into all kinds of things. It's like, Barbara, you said something about lock our doors. I'm sorry, no. I, I, yes, lock our doors, be safe, but don't go around fearing people. Excuse my language, but that's a bunch of bullshit. Our whole world is about fear. How do we love each other? How do we take each other in? How do we educate our children and actually have community? It's like, there is no other. It's all us, as long as it's like we're fearing people. I hitchhiked to get my truck the other day when my ball joint broke in Fairfax lumber. I dropped it off, and, you know, people offered me rides, but it's like, I'd rather take a car that's already going there. And I watched car after car after car ride by, and we've all got these big-ass cars, and we're all like, you know, basically pretty ensconced and separated from reality and the environments which support our lives, and we're driving in circles. And, you know, we're all afraid. It's like, I'm sitting there with my thumb out, and nobody picks me up for a while, which is okay. I walk and ride my bike, and I even drive. It's like, I don't like that much. But don't lock our doors. It's like, you know, lock our doors, but don't be fearful.
So Sierra, I think you've, you need to wrap it up. It's time.
I know. And actually, the thing that I really came down here for today was to ask everybody to move back to wherever they came from and leave us all alone here. Okay, if that doesn't work...
Sierra, we need to wrap it up.
I know we do. And we all came from someplace, and there's too many, Fairfax is turning into Podunkville in terms of, I see the cops...
Fairfax...
Yes, it is. If you look at how many people are being pulled over at stop signs, this and the other thing, it's like, it's not Fairfax.
We have other people waiting. Thank you very much. I'm sorry about your son. I hope he recovers quickly. Lynn, do you want to, want to state your name and address, please?
My name is Ling Shin Bell. I live at 63 Dominga, and there's, there's actually three things I wanted to talk about, so I'm going to try to be brief. The first thing is, I wanted to ask Garrett if, like, I had asked a couple months ago about the bridge that goes between Dominga and Forest, and it's a really nice old redwood bridge, and the footings are being jeopardized by the ivy that's growing on there. And Garrett, I was, you remember? Hello? Yeah. So you said you were going to look into having that being maintained, so I'm just wondering where that's at? Are you supposed to talk now?
I think you, why don't you, why don't you just respond briefly?
Sure. It's on the list.
It's on the list? That's the answer? It's on the list? Okay. So hopefully, yeah, because that would be really a shame to have that bridge get rotten. It's a really, really good bridge.
Garrett, is it possible for you to maybe follow up and talk to Lynn so we can move it along on the list, or if it's not doable, that we can be clear that right now it's not doable? That would be great. Thank you. Lynn, go ahead.
Okay. The other thing is about the noise ordinance. I was, there was, the music at Paris has been getting louder and louder, and so the other night, I called the police about it, and it was late, and he went and measured the sound next to our house, and he, it was 50 decibels. And he said that because they're in a commercial zone, then the reading where I live was applied as a commercial zone, even though I'm in a residential zone. So I went and looked at the ordinance, and it's actually not how it reads. What it reads is, if the measurement location is on a boundary between two different zones, the noise level limit applicable to the lower noise zone shall apply, which would mean that if I'm in a residential zone, then it should be, it should not exceed the limit on the residential zone, not the limit on the commercial zone, which makes a lot more sense to me. So do you understand what I'm saying? Yeah?
We've had quite a bit of discussion on the noise ordinance, so maybe that's another thing that Garrett could talk to you about. I think that may be an inaccurate understanding of it, but I think you, Garrett, maybe you and Lynn can talk a little bit more about that. Okay?
I think that the police needs, needs to be, to be re-educated on that.
I think right now, I think you may be reading that inaccurately, but let's have Garrett and you talk a little bit about it. And what was your third thing, please?
The third thing was about the speed on Dominga, that I think it should be lowered to a 15-mile limit, speed limit. And so that should be brought to the, you know, to the agenda at some point. So that was the third thing.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn. Next speaker, Jody? If you want to state your name and address, please.
Jody Timms, 290 Cascade. Good evening, council members. I haven't seen you for a little while, but I'm here basically to give a very short report as your representative to the Commission on Aging. Tomorrow is our monthly meeting. It's happening at San Geronimo Valley Community Center, which is really close and handy. Our wonderful state senator, Mark McGuire, will be giving a legislative update out there from 10 to 11. So I just want to encourage community members, people watching, to go on out and, and hear what he has to say and see what the Commission on Aging is up to. Also, the Commission on Aging sponsors a senior information fair once a year, and that's coming up on October 21st at the Civic Center, the Marin Center. It's an all-day affair. There's usually four or 500 booths with services for seniors, and usually up to 5,000 people. So I encourage people also who might want to know about resources that would be available for themselves if they're seniors, or for their parents if they're less than seniors. It'd be great if people want to go out for that. And also, there'll be an age-friendly booth, and age-friendly Fairfax will be there and represented. I want to just very quickly change hats for a minute, and representing 350 Marin, which is a climate action group I work with, we've been busy on a couple events I want to be sure people know about. First, there's a big event coming up called Time to Lead on Climate. It's on November 9 at Dominican University from 7 to 9. A representative from the governor's office. It's all about California as an example for the world in terms of Paris and the U.N. Conference. So there's some great speakers coming up, and we really encourage people to find out about it. The website is leadonclimate.org. So you can go there, buy a ticket. We encourage that. I'll leave a flyer. And then also, again, in preparation for Paris, there will be actions around the world on November 29. And 350 Marin will be hosting an action at the hub from 11 to 12. It's similar to what we did for Draw the Line a couple years ago and Connect the Dots. So I'll leave a flyer about that. We're obviously encouraging people to educate themselves around climate change issues and get active. We had a great victory today in terms of Governor Brown finally signing SB 350, which didn't have everything, but it, we wanted, but quite a bit. So we're just happy about some of these events. There's some great things coming up. Oh, I forgot one more. Naomi Klein, her book, This Changes Everything, there will be a showing on the 19th and 20th of October, next week, or week before, week after, excuse me, and 350 Marin will be hosting a discussion after the movie at the Rafael Theater. Thank you.
Jody, what, what time is the Commission on Aging meeting tomorrow?
10 o'clock, 10 to 11. At San Geronimo? One hour, yeah.
Thank you.
For the update from, that's just the update from McGuire, then the meeting afterward.
Thank you, Jody. Appreciate all those announcements. Next speaker, please, if you could state your name and address, if you feel comfortable doing so. You might want to move, yes.
Yeah. Thank you. My name is Emma Lauder, and I am from part of the Reduced by Two Committee, which is a project of Sustainable Fairfax. I would like to bring your attention to pedestrian safety. Whether it is drivers not being able to see pedestrians, or bikers or drivers, and drivers not stopping, this is an issue that needs to be dealt with. But the sheriff's department and school district are concerned with this issue. They released an email this week stating their concerns. I propose pedestrian safety flags. These are bright flags that are held by the pedestrians while crossing. By doing this, the driver will spot the bright color and realize that there is a person waiting to cross. The pedestrian walks the flag to the other side and puts it in the touch container. There will be receptacles for the flags on either side of the crosswalk. This plan has been used in Kirkland, Washington, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, Bridgeport, Connecticut, Glendale, California, McCall, Idaho, and other areas. These flags are an inexpensive solution to a costly and dangerous problem. One flag will cost between $2 to $4. That means less than $100 for two crosswalks with five flags on each side. This is way less than about $500 it would cost for one new stop sign or the high cost for embedded crosswalk lights. I have private investors willing to pay for a trial. I propose a trial of two crosswalks. I believe that the best place for the trial is at the crosswalk from Four Paws to SNN Auto. This is because there is no stop sign there. The other crosswalk I'm concerned about is the one leading from the Hummingbird Cafe towards Drake Boulevard. This is because when cars turn onto Broadway, they are not prepared to stop for pedestrians. These are models that I have made out of objects I had. The ideal color for these flags are bright safety orange or yellow. I would like to get input and opinions from both the town council and Fairfax Police Department, but the location where these flags would be the most effective. I would like to get permission to get a trial program. Even if this plan only saves one life, it has done its job. Once again, my name is Emma Lauder, and I would like to propose a pedestrian flags program in Fairfax. Thank you for giving me your time to present my idea today.
Thank you. Emma, before you sit down, Garrett, would it be possible to sit down with Emma? If I'm available, I'd like to be there to see if we can try this pilot. Is that something... Michelle, could you get Emma's contact information, please? Thank you for being here tonight.
Can I add something? Emma, thank you so much for your presentation. I want you to know that three years ago, Emma came up with this, and she's tried and knocked on doors, and she has stuck with it, and the perseverance and professionalism that you just displayed is, I almost cried. And I want you to know that she offered to pay for this herself, and that is not sustainable. So obviously, we needed to redirect that because there are a lot of people that want to support something like this happening, and thank you for inspiring us, and I hope that we'll be able to work something out to support this happening.
Emma, I also want to thank you a lot, showing a great, great initiative. It's a great idea, and I think it really is a really good idea to explore, and it's very cost-effective. And I know there's a retirement community in Walnut Creek called Rossmar, and they have those at every crossing, and it really is effective. I mean, just having that flag in your hand really makes you visible from a lot farther away. So I think it's a great idea, and I'd really like to see us implement it. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Emma, I also have a bunch of flags that I can give you. Because when we were trying to get, this is maybe even before we were born, when we were initially trying to get a crosswalk at Oak Tree Lane, we got a bunch of flags, and we had people carrying them across the street, and it is effective. And we have some flags left over, and so I would like to donate them to this because I think it's great.
Thank you, John. So, thank you, Emma. You've, I think we can probably make something work out for your pilot. All right, next speaker, please, if you would state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Lynn Walsh. I live on Dominga Avenue, and I just have to say, that's a really tough act to follow, but she did great. So I, I came tonight to just share with you some traffic calming efforts that we've put together on Dominga Avenue and Napa Avenue. We call it Slow Minga. If you've been on our street, you might have seen a sign or two. It happened, the event happened on the, on September 18. And just as a background, why we did this traffic calming effort, it was because the speeding on our street is unsafe and terrifying, pretty much, how fast people burn rubber down our street. We have a lot of small children. We have pets. We have elderly. We have pedestrians. Our street is one of the main streets that pedestrians and bike riders use to get around town to avoid the main thoroughfares. So it's a major concern for us. And so we got together, Graham's here tonight, and he'll speak about what he, what he did, but basically, we worked with the town manager and the town staff to create some faux bumpouts into the street. We actually just ended up doing one on the straightaway, and it was made out of cones. And the idea was, as you're coming down, you're forced to slow down and kind of curve around it. Also, we decorated it, and we all stood around with, you know, funny clothes on, and we waved. So many people slowed down and stared at us as well. But we also fought, put up the signs, which I mentioned. We had a media release, which I've sent to you ahead of time, and we had postcards, and we put a thing up on next door just to get the word out that Dominga and Napa Avenues is really Slow Minga, and we welcome everyone to come through our, our street, but please just slow down. That's all we really wanted to share. So the outcomes, it'd be great if we had like some sort of traffic study to share with you. We don't. We did a SurveyMonkey survey. We had 22 people take the survey, which is rad, and 91% of those 22 people had a positive experience on our street with our Slow Minga effort, and 71%, or 77, I can't read my handwriting, felt that cars were more likely to drive slower as a result of our effort. But we all know with our Safe Streets campaigns that these things are temporary. They get in people's eyes, and then they forget about them and keep going. So, but before I talk about next steps, I just want to say thank you to town manager Garrett Toy, and Vice Mayor Goddard, and Mark Lockerbie. All of you helped us very much in our effort, so thank you. So what we're asking for is the next steps, and we don't really know what those next steps are, and so we need to have some creative thinking with town staff, and maybe the police folks, and maybe some engineers, and we thought we could like have a neighborhood meeting of some kind and just have a brainstorm. You know, speed limit changes, speed bumps, bumpouts, more police enforcement, changing in the parking configurations, and now the amazing idea of pedestrian flags. All those things could possibly be part of our solution, and so we just want to talk about that and explore it with all of you. So some of our neighbors, my neighbors have come to also share their thoughts about this, so I'll turn it over to them when they come up. But I just look forward to a collaborative effort, and thank you for your support. It's been really helpful to us.
Thank you. Next speaker? If you could state your name and address, please.
Great. My name's Eric Leland. I live on Dominga Avenue. First, I just want to applaud Emma Lauder for that great proposal with the traffic calming and pedestrian safety. I'm here to speak about that as well. I took part in the Slow Minga event, and it's neat to see a lot of folks thinking about traffic calming. In particular, I found the event, I just want to speak about my experiences and who I spoke to after the event primarily. It was interesting for me to learn after the event, kind of the reactions folks had without me soliciting them. So I didn't go around asking a lot of people, "What'd you think? What'd you think?" But I saw a lot of my neighbors come through, slow down at the bumpout, and wave, and, and make some, you know, supportive gestures. And so later, as I spoke to them, and some of them even, you know, several days later were remarking that, you know, they were remembering that they should slow down, right? It was this, it's this neat moment where, you know, psychologically, I think what was happening is there was a surprise and positive moment on our street where we were saying, you know, "It's time to think. It's time to slow down. Let's recognize that there's a lot going on in this street." Folks reacted. They had to. There was a bumpout, right? That's interesting. There was an obstruction. Folks had to slow down, avoid it, and move on. Took a couple seconds of thought, but it lasted several days of additional thinking and being aware of safety. It was a very simple move. And for me, I had no idea how, you know, this would work out, and given the, the level of effort we put into it the first round, I would say it was a fair amount of time put in, but having done that, it seems like a very easy model for, for me to imagine, having the town of Fairfax in support with a lot of neighbors, you know, to come together once in a while and to say, "Hey, you know, this doesn't necessarily have to be a bumpout that's permanent. That might be a great idea." But I could certainly see efforts, you know, ongoing basis on different streets... ongoing basis on different streets where it made sense that this kind of activity happened. It would be a bit of a surprise, it would be fun, and it would allow people to remember, "Hey, you know, it's time to slow down." The other thing I wanted to speak to was my experience moving to Fairfax and specifically Dominga Avenue. It's an incredible vibrant street, much more vibrant than I've ever lived at before in my life. And what's interesting is, as I drive up and down that street, I've noticed I feel like I go particularly fast. I'm an accomplished speeder, you can judge that by tickets that I've earned. However, having gone up and down that street, thinking, "Wow, I'm going really fast." I look down at my speedometer, "I'm going 22," and the speed limit's 25. And as I started doing that more and more, I realized, "That's quite ridiculous." There's been times I've had to slam on the brakes because a cat came into the street, or, you know, slam on the brakes because I caught the eye of a child on the sidewalk, and I realized, "I have to slow way down. I need to go under 20 in order to actually be safe going up and down this street that has a 25 mile per hour limit." So I'd just like to come out in support of thinking about, can we change that, or can we do some other measures to help? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, Graham Erwin, Dominga Avenue. Talked about three tough acts to follow. Why did I end up on the end of this? But I'm also here to talk about the traffic calming experience, the experiment that we had. And I also... I want to first thank the staff and the town council for their support and cooperation in this, and for taking the brunt of the ire. There was some ire, and it was directed... I think maybe Mark Lockerbie took the worst of it, but I really appreciate your openness and cooperation in that. I also want to thank my neighbors, some of whom are here tonight. I've been vexed by this speed problem on Dominga for a long time, and I got involved in it first in 2005, and frankly, felt dismissed by the town at that time. A new neighbor who has three young children approached me maybe a month or two ago and asked me if I wanted to get re-involved, and I said, "There is no way that I'm doing this again by myself. If I'm going to do this, I have to have other people work with me." And I was the instigator of this Parking Day bump-out parklet thing, but the community came together, and it became much more than I had even hoped it would be. There was a potluck at the end. It was a really beautiful time. Most of the people... There were a few angry people. I was there in the morning and the evening. There were a few angry people, I think, that are probably angry anyway, but most of the people drove by, kind of wondered what was going on, had kids wave at them, and smiled, and waved, and it probably took an extra 30 seconds in their commute that day, but they were actually smiling during their commute, and I don't see people smiling during their commute. It doesn't strike me as a particularly happy experience generally. So I was joking that this was the street, the street that I live on, is that day is the street I'd like to move to. Unfortunately, nearly the next day, it went back to how it was before, and even on my way over here, I watched people run the stop sign at Sherman and Dominga, and it really needs to change. I have... You know, we don't mind people driving through there, but we don't want to live in fear. I mean, people live in fear of their children being on the sidewalk. I have two children, I have a six-year-old and a three-year-old, and they're sensible kids, but they're kids, and they shouldn't have to be more conscientious than the drivers in the cars, and that's how it is right now. Those kids, or their parents, or all the other kids on that street have to be more aware, because there are people... And I don't know if it's, you know, part of its design, but people driving through there that are not paying attention to what's going on and not driving safely. It's a great neighborhood. You know, we invite you all to come for Halloween, but we have to change this, so I really hope that we move toward a permanent solution. I know I'm out of time.
I think we need to wrap up.
What's that?
I think we need to... You need to wrap up?
Yeah, I'm wrapping up.
Okay, great.
I just want to say, on a separate but community-related note, I feel like the town ought to do some kind of vigil for Steve Carter. It really just feels like a Fairfax kind of thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Garrett, do you think... It sounds like Vice Mayor Goddard has been involved in this. Do you think you guys could maybe do a sit-down with the Dominga neighborhood, or maybe you've already planned that?
Yeah, I think what we volunteered is, we said we weren't happy to meet, police chiefs meet, and actually, it's just FYI, but the neighborhood knows this, is I already asked our traffic engineer to look at traffic calming measures on the street.
Great, thank you. All right, well, thank you, everyone. Anya, would you just state your full name and address?
My name is Anya Chandler, and I'm at 4 Barker Avenue, right off Portius in Fairfax. And I also catch the ire of my neighborhood, and I've come to thank the town council, but I also want to thank Emma. It's a brilliant idea, not just for pedestrians, but for people like myself that sometimes don't see out every place we should see. And I am... I've been thinking that I know that they use that in Chautauqua, and I've thought it was just a great idea, so I hope we do it. And I also want to thank the people on Dominga. The people in Deer Park talked about that great effort that you made, and we know what we have the same trouble, and I love seeing what you did, and even though you take all my trick-or-treaters away, I am so happy that you do it because it's such a lovely activity, and I hope everybody donates candy or money to the people of Dominga for that. So what I came for is, I am known in the neighborhood as the nosy old lady, and because I nag people a lot, and... But I'm used to it because I'm a teacher. And this note I made up because my neighbors all mentioned to me that, "How come the chipper truck was there and they didn't know about it?" And I had felt the same thing when I went up to Deer Park, as I do every morning. There was this wonderful guy, Jack, I think his name was, chipper truck. "Oh, everything's good," but nobody was there. And as I walked back home, people said, "How come..." So I decided to write you a letter that says, "Thank you for your support of Chipper Day." My neighbors and I know there's a desperate need to cut and clear flammable vegetation, but I really think that better signage would have resulted in more people. As I went down the street, I told people about Chipper Day, and two people had their gardeners there, and who immediately went up and dumped all their vegetation from their trucks into the chipper. And I had had my chipper, my guy there, for two weekends working on the back, you know, just waiting to catch fire hill, and it just sat there because I had no idea. And because I'm on the volunteer committee, and Helen and Denny, who gave birth to this whole thing, apparently, somebody else is doing it now, but if we could have signage, thank you, thank... And all the people said, "We didn't know about it." Well, I do know that it was in the sanitary bill, but nobody had that.
So, Anya, there's a couple things. We did talk about this yesterday, I think your idea of additional signage, but along with the Marin sanitary bill, it was also in the Fairfax Recreation Guide, which was mailed to everybody in town.
Yeah, but you know...
We had it on the town's website for four months. We had it in our town's electronic newsletter, the volunteers' newsletter as well, so I'm given that you're a volunteer...
You know, that is excellent, and I applaud that, but when I wanted my children to do something, I left them notes, I put things on the refrigerator, I had planes flying by, but if I didn't hit them on the way on that day...
I think one of our suggestions is, next year, along with your great idea about signage, would be to have the volunteers actually walk around and let people know. I will tell you, the Deer Park neighborhood had the most participation.
I know they did.
Forty-five there, so it was a very successful event, and we can always improve on it, so we'll take your suggestions.
Well, can I just tell you that I got more than three dozen signatures, and that was just walking around, because as a member of age-friendly Fairfax, I broke my foot on the dark, broken streets, and I couldn't go anywhere, so people came to me.
Great. Thank you, Anya, and thanks to the volunteers for all their work on this. Next speaker, please.
Joseph Odom, 98 Portius, and I mostly came to support Anya. I live on the west side of Portius, and one of the reasons I want to talk is because behind my house and behind all the houses there, there's a paper street, Barker Avenue, which is, at one time, many years ago, it looked like it was kind of graded, and now it's overgrown. And we have a problem back there with neighbors throwing yard debris over the back fence, and it's creating a fire hazard. And one of the reasons we need a lot of lead time on the chippers is so that we can get the neighbors up there to clean it. I've talked to the town staff about it, and I have been repeatedly told that it's not their problem, even though it's town property. So I don't know what to do about this, but I know, I talked to John, he's walked back there, maybe some of you have walked back there. It's a problem, and it's a fire hazard. And, you know, if we had some lead time, we could get volunteers back there, we knew when the chipper was coming, we could get it out, but, you know, as much as I hate to suggest this, it would be good perhaps to have some kind of an incentive for the neighbors not to throw yard debris over the fence. And, you know, I don't want to, like, suggest a new ordinance or something, but... Or maybe there is something on the books that makes that illegal, because it's, you know, from private property onto town property, and then it just sits there because the town... I've asked the staff, they don't have the resources to go back there and clean it. In the meantime, we're sitting on a fire hazard. So I don't know what can be done. You know, one thing is, you know, plenty of lead time and getting volunteers back there to help with the cleanup, and maybe you all have some ideas, because I know, and, I mean, I kind of consider it rising to the level of something that maybe you could discuss, even though it's open time.
Well, I think a couple of things is just... We did have a lot of lead time on this. You know, I announce it every month at the council meeting, in addition to all the Next Door and all those things we did, but I think what you're suggesting is lead time to deal with that one area, and maybe, Garrett, do you have ideas about how we can... Maybe we can get the volunteer... Our volunteers to help move that brush out when it's time. It looks like... Well, let's let Garrett talk, and then John.
So what we can do is, obviously, with these things, I didn't... When I said it's on the list, I probably should have expanded a little bit more than in doing that short, little curt comment, but... So I apologize for that. But in reality, we are stretched. That being said, we'll go back and take another look. You know, as season comes up, right now, we're just preparing for rainy season, so obviously, we missed it. But I don't disagree, the volunteers could do something, we could re-look at that. We... You know, it's just a list of 100 items that we have three guys working on to try to get things ready, and so things always pop up. I could tell you something to be at the top of the list, something will come up, and we'll have to shift resources, like we'll have a little rock slide, we'll have to clear the rock slide. A contractor will leave their hatch, their tailgate will open, all this gravel will fall in the street, I got to take them off and get that cleaned up. So, that being said, we'll take a look at this. If we can do something next year, we will, along with the other things, but, you know, we don't mean to not follow up on things. I just think we don't do a very good job of explaining kind of where we're at and how things work, so we'll definitely take a look at it.
I think with our new hire for Public Works, maybe it would be nice if we can do something if there's a bunch of debris there now, but at least for next year, we can probably try to make sure we get that out of there and ready for the Chipper Day. John, what did you want to add?
Well, what I'd like to add is that if people are dumping debris over their back fence into this rightaway, it's pretty obvious where it came from, and if somebody is dumping it there, it's obvious that they did it. I don't... I mean, the volunteers have, you know, about 150 projects of themselves, too, and, you know, one of the things that shouldn't be on the top of their list is cleaning up somebody else's garbage. I mean, they clean up dog poop and stuff like that, too, but, you know, the dog owner should clean it up, and, you know, I think we should encourage these neighbors to not contribute to the community's danger.
The other thing you can do is, we have a complaint online form, and you can enter a complaint, and we are complaint-based, since we don't have... We have one code enforcement person, but that's the other thing to do is, I know you don't want to rat out your neighbors, to use an elegant term, but also, if you see these kind of things happening, issuing... You know, entering on a complaint will help us know, okay? Renee, what did you want to add?
Actually, I wanted to say, Joseph, I appreciate what you put out there as a possible, you know, solution, which is that if we know in enough time, you can organize some volunteers to go out and do it. So I think there's nothing better than having your neighbors see a bunch of their neighbors volunteering to pick up their own, you know, their trash, to sort of incentivize them maybe to get out there and help, or to not throw it there in the first place. So I think, given our staffing, and it's not an excuse, it's the reality, we could use as many volunteers, and it might help to leave your number, and we would actually have a file, like, when it comes to pre-Chipper Days, like, a month before, excuse me, we would give a call to appoint person in those areas where we know we have a problem, an ongoing problem, and then you could activate a crew, and hopefully, it will alleviate the problem organically. So we could try that.
So, Joseph, would you mind giving your name and contact information to Michelle, our town clerk? You now have become our volunteer.
Congratulations.
Mayor, if I may, too.
Let's make it quick.
Just also, Joe and Anya, it's a... If you wanted to, it's a pitch for signing up for the town newsletter to make sure that you get notice, you know, next time around, and anyone watching on the internet, too, it's a great way to get informed of events like Chipper Day, and then you can spread the word to your neighbors.
You know, the refuse company did a beautiful letter. Two people showed me the letter that they had up in their refrigerator. The point is that it just becomes part of, so if what we...
Anya, I think we... You either... We're not...
It's signage. I just want to say, signage, immediate post-signage.
So we'll work on that for next year. Appreciate your comments. So with that, let's move on to the consent calendar. Just asking if we will allow comment on the consent calendar, but not right now, it's right now, it's with the council.
Could I just... Please, call the office.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Come up to the podium, press the button, and state your name and address, please.
My name is Tom Monilla. I reside at 48 West Bray Drive in Fairfax, and I just want to say, I was happy to hear of the apprehension of the people that are suspected of committing the highness act of murdering that nice man. And I was hoping that the town council would observe some moment of silence and prayer and meditation for his spirit and his loved ones.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say that as a member of the town, as a, you know, longtime resident of Fairfax and San Salvador, but mostly Fairfax, that, you know, over the years, I've taken quite an interest in, when I see violations of, you know, a nature that is not becoming of the town, that reflects badly on the town of Fairfax, you know, I take it upon myself to mention it to the police or somebody, mostly the police, you know, when I see something going on that just isn't right. And I was hoping that, you know, possibly, if that happened more often in this town, because, you know, I think, you know, there would be less... Less things that take away from our genteel, you know, and loving town, you know, reputation. And I think it has to do with a lot of quality of life issues, and I'll try to speed this up. I just noticed that thing, that timer over there. But, you know, just for instance, you know, I've seen people drinking in public right in front of a coffee shop where I frequent in downtown Fairfax, you know, and called police about it, and fortunately, they've come and they've taken care of it. You know, I really... A big shout-out. You know, I really, a big shout out to the police for the job they do for us in this town, you know, because it's not an enviable position, I'm sure, you know, but, you know, when I was inside the coffee shop, you know, I overheard some people in the coffee shop that were kind of like naysaying what was going on, you know, as far as the police, you know, questioning these guys about, you know, what they're doing and stuff, you know, and they didn't say anything directly to me, because I don't think they knew that I was the one that called the police on these people that were drinking right outside the coffee shop, 3:00 in the afternoon, on a weekday, with parents and children going by, you know, and I just saw some of my old neighbors here with their two young daughters. You know, and that's the type of thing, I think, that really detracts from the fabric of society, and in particularly not, I'm not talking about society, I'm talking about our little society here.
Thank you.
And, so I'd just like to hope that you will, you know, take that into consideration and observe it some time for that.
Actually, we're going to adjourn the meeting in Mr. Carter's memory, so that will be at the end of the meeting, and.
Oh, that's wonderful.
You know, we didn't know him personally, but we feel for his family, and it's a terrible situation, so we will be doing that, that'll be later tonight.
I think it ought to, to all the assembled folks here, you know, that it behooves us as citizens to take an interest, and when we see something that's not right, to do something about it.
Thank you.
Got to be part of the solution.
Thank you for being part of our community, we appreciate it.
And I read the Roswell report on a weekly basis, and I'm unhappy to report that most of the reporting in the police log is due to bad behavior, and particularly concerning drugs and alcohol.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, so let's, thank you very much. And if you're not here at the end of the meeting, you can watch us online, and, thank you. So, our, let's take up the consent calendar, if there's anything from the council, very briefly, otherwise we'll pull an item. Otherwise, if not, I can open it to public comment. No, okay, public comment? Or is there any public comment on the consent calendar? John, did you have something?
Yeah, but well, I don't necessarily want it, I talked to Renee about this, it's concerning, I guess this is number seven, which is a letter going to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission around their takeover.
Yeah, I think what we may do is just, let's pull that if you want to discuss it more, because we've got two folks waiting for presentations.
Okay. That's fine with me, I mean, I don't have a lot to say on it, but, you know, I just think representation is very important on these regional, you know, they're deciding policy for a lot of towns, and there's not very much representation on MTC.
So, I was going to report on that and give a little more information during my, during my report, so as not to pull it, but if anyone wants to have a larger discussion, then obviously we need to pull it. But I was going to report and give some information, and I think we can have a discussion just at that point.
Okay, well, does that affect the content of this letter? I mean, can you change the letter?
Okay, why don't we just pull it and move it to the first item on the regular agenda? So, because we've had some folks patiently waiting to give us presentations, I want to thank Vice Mayor of Mill Valley, Gary Lyon, who's going to talk on the Marin Business Emergency Readiness pilot.
Excuse me, did you want to adopt the consent, Gary?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll move approval of consent, except for number seven that we moved to open.
Okay, thank you, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This one is working.
We're pulling item seven, and it will be the first.
No, 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 I'm not.
That's dead, okay. So, what we will do, so I want to thank Gary, I have the pleasure of sitting on the countywide Public Disaster Emergency Preparedness Committee with Gary, and also David sits on something called the DC3 Disaster Something Committee Countywide. And Gary and some of his colleagues have done really the yeoman's work on this pilot that we hope to bring countywide. So, Gary, did you want to add a few thoughts as they load you up, or are you already loaded up?
No, I think we're all loaded up, thank you very much. Madam Mayor and council members, thank you very much for inviting me tonight. This is a project that we've been working on for several years, and we're about ready to roll it out, and we wanted to talk to some of the other cities in the county and other parts of the county about it. It's called Marin Business Emergency Readiness, and you'll notice we, the acronym has an accent after the M, so we're trying to pronounce it M-BUR, as in the results of a fire. As you know, fires is some of the most hazardous things that Fairfax faces and Mill Valley faces, as well as the rest of Marin. It's not the only one, but it's one of the most serious, and we thought that was an appropriate acronym. It's really about getting businesses ready for emergencies, and really bad emergencies, which are by definition disasters. I just wanted to give you a quick update on it, a little bit about the background, what is, what are the components of it, how we're planning to implement it, the problem, we have a problem, and I'll discuss that later, and then what we're going to do is the next steps. Okay, this is a collaborative effort of the Marin Disaster Council, which Barbara and I are involved, and David is actually a member of the Marin Disaster Council, and the Marin Economic Forum. And it's, I'm not here really as the Vice Mayor of Mill Valley, I am the, on the Executive Board of the Marin Economic Forum, and I was appointed by them to the Marin Disaster Council to try and lead this program on a countywide basis. But the intent all along has been to do something on a countywide basis. Our audience are all of the businesses in Marin, there's about 12,000 payroll employers, those are companies that employ people, and they employ about 110,000 employees, so it's a pretty good-sized group of people that are here most days, that may or may not know anything about disasters, and when disasters hit, especially during work hours, these are going to be the first place, and the people that are going to first react to them. There is also about 38,000 sole proprietors, a lot of them home businesses, but also small businesses with, without a lot of additional employees. DC3, which is the Marin Disaster Council, that's the acronym, did some research on business readiness. In fact, it was our PDEP committee that Barbara and I serve on, that did that a couple of years ago, and we found that most businesses aren't really well-prepared. Some are, the banks, some big businesses, PG&E, I mean, people that deal with disasters on a regular basis are, but most businesses are not. As a result, we developed the idea of tackling, first, the essential businesses, and try to make them resilient. Those are the ones, the businesses we want to be open first, and stay open if possible during or after the disaster. So, things like hotels, restaurants, medical facilities, pet stores, things that you need, groceries, gas stations. So, we actually did a pilot project in Mill Valley for a couple of years. Since we didn't, I didn't have any budget for this, I was able to work something through my own city and get some city staff to work on something, because this was an important issue for Mill Valley as well. And so, we actually did a three-year pilot project with that nomenclature, Essential Business Disaster Resilience. And we got 24 different businesses involved, 22 of them completed the program, and all of them did quite a bit in terms of getting better prepared for disasters. So, we thought it was quite successful, and we learned an awful lot by working with them. So, let me tell you a little bit, I'm going the wrong way, the components, this is a really touchy. Okay, what is it made up of? First of all, there is a Red Cross Ready Rating Program, which is something that's offered by the American Red Cross. It involves a survey that businesses walk through to see how well-prepared they are. They get a scorecard out of that survey that says, here's how you rank, so you have some numerical ranking and some idea of how well you are prepared, and also it identifies next steps in what you need to do going forward. So, if I'm going the right direction, this is a sample of the survey. That's why I passed out there, and this is going to be a little impossible for you to read, but this appears on, online, and there are basically questions, for instance, this one is about have you done a hazardous assessment for your business based on something in your, put together by your local emergency jurisdiction? And so, we in fact developed something for the county of Marin, and we put that together, and the businesses work on that. And then you get, there's some scores and some numbers that are assigned based on how far along you are in that process. The next thing is, we then put together a toolkit of things that work in conjunction with that survey form. So, the survey doesn't allow you to enter information or do anything with it, it just allows you to rank yourself, and we thought that was a real problem. So, we created an emergency plan template that is tied to the survey, so as you go through and you ask a question, have you done this? Well, it allows you to enter the information and put it on your own business computer, and you build a plan as a result of it. So, you respond to the question, you put down the information, and you essentially are building an emergency plan that you can share wherever your employees are, you can pull it out when an emergency happens, and you've got something to refer to, so what we do next. And that looks like, let's see if I can do this, this, this is the emergency plan template, and again, you can probably read it better on your client, but this is an example of a hazard vulnerability assessment, and it lists a bunch of hazardous events like fires or floods, or windstorms, or tornadoes, or tsunamis, and it allows you to say, what is the probability of that happening to my business, based on where I am? If I'm up in the, you know, close to the wildlands, then I have a fire threat. If I'm down in the lowlands, I might have a flood threat, but every business is going to be different on this. And then what is the likely impact on your business if you, if one of those things happened to you? If you happen to be a winery up in Napa, and you've got hundreds of kegs of wine barrels stacked up and unbraced against the wall, that is going to be a huge problem when the earthquake hits, right? So, you got to assess how likely is an earthquake going to hit, and how vulnerable are we to that? The combination of those two give you something called the risk exposure, but it's kind of, okay, these are the things I want to focus on, and I want to deal with first, but that's, those are the highest priority things you want to focus on. You can't do everything at once, but if it's, if you've got fire problems, then focus on the issues dealing with fire first. So, that's just an example. Now, this is the template that is on the business's computer, they fill it in, they can sort things down into the priority sequence, and then they've got that for reference going forward.
Is it available online?
It is, I will get to that. Pieces of it are online, and that's part of the issue. Okay, in addition, up in this corner, up, right there, there's a little yellow tab that says "Help," and that's what we call the Help Screen. And so, for each one of these, we also created a Help Screen that says, here's the hazard risk assessment, you go through, it tells you how to do it, it tells you considerations, things to think about while you do it, and so, you can get that on the computer screen while you're filling in and working on it as a ready reference. One of the reasons we did this is when we went through it in Mill Valley, we found that a lot of people were feeling lost, and they needed someone to kind of hold their hand to take them through it. And we tried to make this thing as self-directed and self-guided as possible, so it's all self-contained, so when you got a problem, you can hit a Help Screen, and it'll tell you what you need to do next. So, that's all built into the process. Now, if I can get back to the.
I think your next slide is the readiness certificate, Gary, right there? I think, based on mine, I see the readiness certificate next.
No, I want to come back to this thing, because I'm walking through this list of things. There's also a reference sheet, so I walked through the template, there's the Help Screen, the reference sheet, and I passed out a copy of that, but it's a, it's something we put together as a quick reference for businesses. On the front, it has to be customized by the city, because it has a lot of local phone numbers on it, but the rest of it are just helpful hints of what to think about, fire safety, what to do in emergencies, things that you can do to help mitigate hazards on your business, or on the back, so lots of good suggestions and ideas. And this is just something we put together as kind of a handout to get businesses starting to think about this sort of thing. And those are available to all the employees as well, so it's a handy handout. And then finally, we also had readiness certificates, so we, we wanted to acknowledge the businesses. It's very important to get them incentivized to participate, and actually, we looked at things like, we'll give them a break on their business license fees if they come forward with a plan, or some other incentives like that that would make it worth their while to spend some time doing this. But in addition, we'll also, we've established certain levels of achievement, from silver, gold, platinum, there's bronze, silver, gold, platinum, and depending on how they do on the survey. So, we've got a measurement tool, we can say how well-prepared you are, and we can hand out certificates that they can post in their business, they can put it in their advertising if they want, but it's something to help them do it. And actually, we ended up point of presenting them at city council meetings to participants. So, we got a lot of interest going. Okay, so what were we going to do with this? Well, we had developed these pieces, and they were pieces, we had the Red Cross Ready Rating System on the, online, we had Word System, which is the template, and then we also had the Help Screens, which were actually brought in by hyperlinks to support the other thing. We were planning to roll out that as a, as a first implementation, 0.1, and we basically required the businesses to work on three parallel windows, with the expectation that after we got a little experience with that, we would come back and actually combine all three of those into one screen, which involved in creating a new website. But we had all the material for it, it was just having to build a website that would allow you to have all three together, and that's what this would look like. Okay, there we go. The Ember 2.0 concept, which basically at the top part, it has the scoring, so again, this, and each of these is, each third of these is a separate window with, which can scroll. Here would be the template, and so here would be where you would actually enter the information as you develop it, and here's the Help Screen that supports it. So, it puts it all together onto one screen. It was going to be a lot easier to work with, but we didn't have the funding or the time necessarily to do that the first go-round. So, just as we were getting DC3 approval for this, which was last month, in September, American Red Cross announced they were changing their Ready Rating website. So, they have completely reorganized it, it has a lot of the same material, but it's all in a different sequence, it's different questions, the whole thing, you know, is really problematical. So, no longer the template and the Help Screens don't really tie any longer with the rating, survey, and scoring, they've taken down the old website, so we can't even access it. And so, all of a sudden, here in the last couple of weeks, we're kind of floundering, trying to figure out what to do. So, what we are doing, oops, come on. Next steps. We're evaluating whether to try and get permission from Red Cross to use their old survey, and go ahead, and we're going to have to move on to Ember 2.0, though, because it's not available online anymore, the Red Cross one, so we're going to have to go to the next level. That's one option. Another option is, is if Red Cross won't give us permission, is to develop our own list of questions and rework everything to be in sync with that. The third possibility was to rewrite the Ember materials to match the new Red Cross website. Well, based on our last experience, we decided that wasn't a great idea. We also are not really impressed with the new Red, the new survey, it's really not an improvement in our mind. They took a lot of steps backwards, they got lots of people involved and kind of built something that's pretty awkward, in our opinion. So, we are looking primarily at that, right now, we're trying to seek the Red Cross approval to use their old one. If we can't do that, we'll have to go to step two and kind of rewrite our own. And we're trying to seek the funding to support it, we're probably looking at $30,000, which we haven't been able to get yet, but we're working on through various sources. So, that's where we. So, that's where we are.
Thank you, Gary. Anyone on the council have questions for Gary?
I have a quick question. Gary, I know regrettably that you're leaving the council in Mill Valley, but on this project, you're not leaving this project because...
Correct. Yeah, that has, my membership on Economic Forum and on Disaster Council has nothing to do with my position as a council member. So, I plan to continue.
Thank heavens. So, when we do this here in Fairfax, we can call upon you to help guide us.
Sure.
Thank you.
Happy to. And Maggie Lang, who's our, was our consultant in Mill Valley, that's helped us all the way through, is also available. She's a consultant at a very reasonable rate to come in and handhold whatever's necessary. Renee?
Renee?
You're out of business over there.
Don't pull it.
All right, I'm not pulling it. First of all, thank you so much for putting, I can't imagine how much time into all of this and continuing it. So, how does this work in terms of rolling it out to chambers of commerce and how much have they been brought into the initial...
Oh, the chambers, the Mill Valley Chamber was involved all along. Ron Vidal, who is the treasurer of the chamber, was part of our team building this whole thing and the whole, it's going to be on our speaker series shortly for the chambers in, what was it, San Rafael, Mill Valley, Tiburon, and some other, we have a speaker group that is talking to joint chamber meetings, so we're going to be doing that. But the intent is, is to make it available to businesses throughout the county. And we are also selling it through the fire departments of each of the cities and also the independents, so the Marin Fire Department as well for all the unincorporated districts. So, they will all be involved. And there's a whole role in this for them to participate and help guide it in their locale.
I introduced it to our chamber about a year ago when it was still in the pilot phase. And because you guys ran into this wrinkle with the ready rating, I think we need to wait before we bring it to our chamber, but, you know, I think there was some interest. One of your essential businesses, or one of your businesses that was involved, Grillies, or I don't know if they're Grillies there, but they're Grillies here, you know, was very interested in participating when it rolls out in Fairfax.
Good. Well, great. And we're happy to help.
John, did you have something?
It's a good idea. I mean, I'm sorry about the, I've also interacted after our flood here with Red Cross. I was impressed at what a cumbersome organization it is, and I wish you luck.
Well, we also are fortunate on the group that Gary and I are on, that we do have a Red Cross more local person from Santa Rosa. And she also mentioned that Red Cross typically nationally will change these kinds of things. So, finding a solution is really important because even if they still had it online, it looked like they would change it again. So, I think we have at a local level more cooperation. But I also want to say, do people in the audience, the public, have comments or questions on this for Gary? Seeing none. Well, Gary, we really appreciate you giving this talk and all your hard work, and I was very pleased when I found out you would still be involved through the Economic Forum, through the two committees that David and I are on. So, thank you.
Well, thank you all. I'll go back to our snobbish city in California. I assume you saw that on the internet.
Oh, no, did not see that. But thank you for announcing it online.
Someone wrote an article, you know, of the 10 top of this and that, and they said the 10 snobbier cities in California, and Mill Valley was picked number one.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. I don't think it's a snobby city at all.
We were four cities ahead of Beverly Hills, which was...
Oh, well, that's...
They did criteria like the median household income and the housing price, and then the number of art galleries per capita and the number of theaters per capita. That's what really put us up there.
Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate you coming tonight. We all really appreciate it. And just so you know, our council meetings like yours are televised and they are kind of the hottest game in town. People really watch, and we also have a lot of participation in the council itself. So, thank you so much, Gary. I think you got the word out.
Okay.
Moving on to our next presentation, we're honored to have Supervisor Katie Rice and her colleagues here tonight. I think Katie is going to kind of kick off the presentation on the Ross Valley Flood Protection and Watershed update. And one of the things I want to say is, I think it's really important that we have this now sooner rather than later, so that people are aware and get to express their concerns early on. So, thank you, Katie, for being here.
Yeah, well, thank you for inviting us. And I think it is a great opportunity to be able to come to the council. And our program manager, Scott Lyle, is going to make the presentation, but I just sort of wanted to provide a little bit of introduction, especially following on Gary's presentation. It truly, fire and flood are the biggest and most ever-present risks for most of us here, most of the communities in Marin County and certainly in the Ross Valley. So, his presentation was more about disaster preparedness and getting ready to how to deal with the post-event, and this presentation is going to be more on trying to prevent an event, a flood event. And what you'll see, it's going to be a very high-level presentation. Scott's going to focus down on Fairfax primarily, and primarily on the detention basin system. And he'll get into this in more detail, but I just want to reiterate, we can't make the creek big enough, Cordero Madera Creek and its tributaries to hold floodwaters when we have one of these major storm events. We have to do something to hold water back while a storm passes through, and that's what a detention basin system is all about. And Scott will explain sort of what now is on the table. And of course, there's a lot of, there's a lot of still study that has to be done unfortunately, and a lot of these sites need to be vetted, and we do need, we do need community support. And it's going to take every community in the Ross Valley participating in this program in order to make a difference for all the communities. So, with that, thank you again for the opportunity to share with your council. We have lots of flood zone advisory board meetings throughout the year, but it's good to come to the towns, and I'm going to hand it over to Scott.
All right, thank you, Katie. I also want to recognize, we have Russ Eberwine, who's the project manager with Marin County Flood Control District. He's the project manager for the detention basin sites. And so, if anything gets too technical, I'll be turning to Russ to answer the questions. So, like Katie mentioned, I'm going to give a brief overview of the program itself, talk about the timeline. I'm going to dial in and then the specific projects, not only within Fairfax, but immediately adjacent to Fairfax, because several of these detention basins don't actually reside in Fairfax, but they do affect Fairfax. So, I want to make sure that I address those as well. So, as we all know, there's a long history of flooding in Ross Valley. What this graph here represents is a stream gauge in the town of Ross, and it shows over a 50-year period, a lot of significant storm events. And probably the two most recognizable ones are the storm events in 1982 and then 2005. In 2005, after the storm event, the communities got together, that includes Larkspur and Ross, and San Salmo, and Fairfax. They got together and said, "We've got to do something. You know, what can we do?". And the first thing that came to mind is, well, we need, we need some money to really study what the impact is, you know, why is it flooding so much? And based on that, in 2007, we passed a storm drain fee, and that enabled us to begin studying the watershed. What was nice about that is, you know, the 2005 storm event was actually representative of about a 100-year storm. So, we were able to use data from there to actually model and determine what kind of improvements can we do in the watershed to reduce flooding. And as Katie mentioned before, we initially just looked at channel improvements, you know, if we did widening and deepening and removal of bridge structures, you know, can we contain the flooding in the channel? And we realized that couldn't happen. We need something to hold some water back, and that's where the detention basins come in. So, we're looking at a holistic approach where we've got some detention basins that hold water, we've got removal of bridges, bridge impingements to allow water to flow downstream, and then some channel improvements as well to help contain the flow. So, it's a combination of all these measures that work as a system to provide flood protection. So, the actual program itself, I wanted to point out the benefits, and it's very important, obviously, the biggest benefit is the reduction in flood risk and flood damage. But also, you know, in the detention basins themselves, we're going to be improving community facilities, the recreation facilities, the passage, you know, if you wanted to create some trail systems intermingled with the detention basins. We also want to enhance the environment. We want to, you know, increase creek habitat, fish passages, you know, we've got the, down in town of Ross, we've got this fish ladder that doesn't work very well, so that, you know, part of the program includes removal of that fish ladder, and also obviously improve the water quality. So, here's a timeline, a very, very general timeline, but it kind of shows you, again, we started in 2005 with a flood, passed a storm drain fee, and then, as you see, we've, you know, developed this capital improvement plan study. And the study was developed in 2011. That's where we came up with all these measures. There's about 180 measures that include the detention basins, included the bridge impingements, included all the channel improvements. And based on that study, we realized, well, you know, there's, there's a lot of stuff we have to do to protect the valley. What is a short-term goal? You know, 100-year flood protection, we don't really have the money to do that. So, let's shoot for a lower level of flood protection initially. And that created what we call the baseline measures. So, it's a 10-year program providing 25-year level of flood protection. And in that, there's 13 baseline measures. There's a bunch of bridges, Azalea Avenue Bridge, which we're beginning to work on right now. There's four detention basins in there. There's also some channel improvements and Unit 4 improvements down in the town of Ross and Larkspur. What we're at now is, we've got grant money for Phoenix Lake, we've got grant money for Memorial Park, we've got a bunch of money, Caltrans money to do all these bridge projects, and so, we're moving along pretty well right now. And what we wanted to do is, you know, we've got a lot of public feedback on our detention basin locations. And earlier this year, we decided to kind of widen, widen the search criteria of where the detention bases could be located in the entire Ross Valley watershed. You know, the initial CIP study was done in 2011. Maybe there's additional sites we can look at, maybe open it to private properties and take a look at those. Those weren't really analyzed back in 2011. So, we really opened the search criteria and we prepared a flow reduction study. What the flow reduction studies did was, was took all these ideas from the public and looked at additional detention basin sites and rated these sites and what's the best alternatives out of all these different measures that we can do. And based from the results of that flow reduction study was, we developed five primary detention basin sites and five backup sites. And those replaced the sites that we originally came up with a baseline measure. So, we have, you know, a new set of detention basins. So, it was a good thing to do because we kind of opened the criteria and found some additional sites. What I want to do now is kind of talk about those sites that are specific to Fairfax. So, here we, here's a summary of the flow reduction study, the specific primary detention basin sites and the backup detention basin sites. I've highlighted in red here the ones that are in Fairfax and are adjacent to Fairfax. And you'll see there's Deer Park, the former nursery growing grounds, the Lefty Gomez Field, Camp Bothin, and then the Loma Alta Open Space, or the White Hill Middle School. There's two concepts in that location. So, those are the sites we're talking about. You'll see some arrows on there on a watershed map that kind of points to the primary detention basin sites, which I'm going to mostly focus on today. So, here's the, here's the first site, Deer Park. And I want to reiterate that these are strictly concepts. Early in the stage, what you see up here isn't what the final design's going to be, but just something, you know, for us to start looking at. The Deer Park site...
Scott, just to be kind of clear, just to not confuse people, so you guys are evaluating a series of sites. None of these are set in stone, there's not going to be eight potentially. So, just to be clear, because people listening online may not be clear, that now you've broadened the search, you're looking at other alternative sites, but these are just under consideration and there's no concept that I know of to look at eight to 10 sites for sure. The idea is to win them down to less sites, correct?
That's correct. Actually, I was going to, following this site, I was going to kind of tell you where we're at with all the sites. All of these sites right now are slated to be included in the programmatic EIR. So, in general concept, looking at just like a high-level overview of the sites. Again, there's nothing set in stone right now. It's just something that, you know, based on our flow reduction study, these sites came out as the highest ranked at this time. But as I proceed with this, I'll also give you an update on each of the sites and where we're at with them.
Are they in any particular order? Like, when you say Deer Park is a primary site, or are we just looking at the whole...
I'm not going to put them in order. There are primary sites and there are backup sites. So, when I say primary site, the five primary sites are considered part of the program, and those provide the flow reduction that we need to shoot for. The backup sites are, if, as we proceed through the feasibility studies on the, on the primary sites, and one of those primary sites drop out, then we would insert a backup site to replace that site. So, we want, we want some backups in case these sites are weeded out during the feasibility study stage. So, what I want to do is, first, just go through these five sites fairly quickly, just to kind of tell you where they're at and kind of what we're looking at. Again, these sites are going to be carried forward into a programmatic EIR. And then, each site, as far as what stage we're at, is, it varies, and I'm going to address that later on. So, the next site is a former nursery site, which is just, just to the west of Lefty Gomez. You know, we've been, we've been in close coordination with the Perry brothers and talking to them about that site. I'll tell you right now, we're currently in negotiations of getting an appraiser onboard, doing appraisal on their property. They've requested that, and we'll be working on that shortly and hope to, hope to have some kind of appraisal number for the Perrys early next year. This site is basically an embankment, as currently planned, it just shows as an embankment. It could vary again, where we could lower, you know, lower the embankment, make it a smaller site. We've got opportunities to open trails to the open space. We've got opportunities to stabilize the bank along the Shore Francis Drake. We also have an opportunity to provide safe passage for kids going to school at Lefty Gomez. So, there's a lot of opportunities with this site and all very positive.
Since at this point, there will be opportunities to do so after he's done. So, thank you. I just wanted to ask a few clarifying things just for the audience.
And so, the next site I want to talk to, talk about is just to the east of the nursery site, just the Lefty Gomez site. This is probably the site we've done the most work on, the feasibility study work on. We've done some geotechnical analyses on it, we've done some biological assessment on it. And again, this is a basically lowering of the field. This project would actually be in conjunction with a, an additional field just to the north of White Hill to make up for lost field space. So, it's a, it's an item that, a cost item that we would include as part of the cost for Lefty Gomez. Camp Bothin is a backup site. This again is a depression, we would actually grade down to create this, as currently shown. A lot of potential there, but it is a backup site, so if one of those primary sites would drop out, we'd take a stronger look at this. And then, we have actually two concepts in Loma Alta. There's Loma Alta Concept A and Loma Alta Concept B, and they're both backup sites. So, Loma Alta Concept A would actually be a large embankment within the open space to the north of White Hill. And just to piggyback on that, Loma Alta Concept B would just be immediately to the north of White Hill, where there's kind of a raised field right there right now. So, it'd be building up that field a little more and putting a small dam embankment across the creek as it went down there. So, again, both of these are backup sites. We would, you know, the Flood Zone 9 Advisory Board has asked us to look into this site a little more and actually proceed with feasibility studies. So, even though it's considered a backup site, we're going to be doing feasibility studies on it as if it was a primary site. And the main reason for that is... And the main reason for that is, to go back to the baseline measures which came out of the CIP study, the Loma Alta site was an original site, so we felt it was important to keep that as part of the major program, so. So here's the next steps, and this is an important slide here because it kind of captures everything all together. So again, all the sites are included in the programmatic EIR, which we've just begun. Very high-level look at it, none of these are projects, they're just concepts within the programmatic EIR, so they'll just do a high-level analysis of those sites based on a very simple concept. Next, I'm going to talk about each specific site. So Deer Park is a primary site, and right now, we're working with the Ross Valley School District on a memo random of understanding to begin feasibility studies. And what that means is that we'll look at the geotechnical analysis portion, investigation, and also biological investigation on that. And I know Councilman Weinsop is very concerned about the slope stability in Deer Park, and what's nice about the feasibility study is it'll vet that out to make sure before we spend a lot of money in zoo and doing further sequoia environmental analysis, we'll make sure that site addresses Councilman Weinsop's concerns. Also, the former nursery site is a primary site, and again, I've mentioned that we've begun the appraisal process. Well, also, at the same time, we're looking at a purchase option to begin feasibility studies on that site. It's the same thing as an MOU, but it's with a private property owner, so again, geotechnical analysis, looking at the biology of that area. Lefty Gomez, again, is a site that's furthest along, we've already done the geotechnical analysis, we've done the biological, we've got a pretty good concept of what it's going to look like. I've got some preliminary cost estimates, which we're going to share later on this year. Our next step is to work on a memorandum of understanding for the sequin design. So we're working with the Ross Valley School District on that, and, you know, at each step of the way, we want to make sure that the school district is onboard with us, as well as the town of Fairfax. Camp Bothen is a backup site, and again, we're not going to do any further work, any feasibility studies on it unless it's needed later. And then we've got the Loma Alta Concepts A and B, and we're actually going to be doing feasibility studies on those, even though it's a backup site, as I mentioned before, because it was a primary site initially. So we're working with the school district to do the MOU and also to begin the feasibility studies on that. We had to pick one or the other, we don't want to spend a lot of money doing geotechnical analyses at two locations, and so we want to narrow that down to A or B. So we're still working the pros and cons of both of those sites right now. That kind of summarizes all the next steps. Again, you know, we're proceeding with the program, it's a sequence review, and these are all concepts, nothing set in stone, no final design, you know, basin sizes could get smaller, slopes could get flatter, trails could be added, there's just so much more work we have to do. And a lot of that gets vetted out, not only during the feasibility studies, but during the sequoia environmental review phase. And with that, I'm available for any questions. One thing I want to point out, you know, the flow reduction study and information about the program can be found on the website, it's down here, you probably can't see it, but it's www.rossvalleywatersheds.org. And there's a lot of good information on that website. It kind of gives you the history, it gives you the copy of the flow reduction study and how we came up with these primary sites and secondary sites, and just a lot of good information on there.
Sarah, you're not being televised. Scott, could you answer what year is that photograph, do you know?
I believe that one's a 2005 photograph, so.
Okay, and so with that, we'll bring you back to the council first to see if we have any questions, Scott, or Katie, or Russ. Anyone on the council have specific questions right now? Renee?
Thank you, Scott. If I understand you right, the sort of the hydrology studies that assess how much water each of these detention bases is on your website?
That's correct, yeah. The flow reduction study itself will talk about approximate depths, you know, height of the dam to the bottom of the basin, it'll talk about acre foot of storage and how much of that water would hold back. So what's important to note is that, you know, we're looking at flow reduction targets. So we have a target in Fairfax, in San Onofre and Ross. We're trying to reach a certain flow value at each of those locations to allow the storm, 100-year storm to be contained within the channel. And so these detention basins have to kind of work together. We can't put, you know, a couple detention basins up in Fairfax and a couple down in San Onofre and down in, you know, Phoenix Lake and assume that'll work the same as putting them all up in Fairfax. It's not a straight one-to-one ratio, you know, 800 acre feet up in Fairfax doesn't correlate to a spread of 800 acre feet. So a lot of modeling has to be done as we locate these basins.
Okay, and I do want to look at that, and I'll look at that on your websites, because I'm trying to get a handle on, you know, the efficacy of these different basins and how they interact. But you've done a fairly developed study of those issues, I assume.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah. There's a hydrologic model as well as a hydraulic model for the town of watershed.
There's another aspect that, I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad Katie's here. A concern that strikes me is, just based on personal observations of the 2005 event, I went around untangling a lot of local flooding, you know, things that were blocking up, you know, just gutters, and I also observed there was quite a bit of debris that would back up on bridges next to bridge abutments and cause a lot of problems. And recently, a neighbor reported that a tree fell in the creek, and we're looking at whether the town can pull that out. And I know that there's a real problem with fallen trees and debris in the creek that can cause damming against a bridge and create really bad flooding, and that could be the difference between, you know, a serious flood or a close call. And what I didn't hear, and what I'd like to hear, is if the district has the resources to go into the creeks on a regular basis before flood season, clear out debris, clear out broken trees, because that's a real gap. And I think the flood district, with the resources that it has, could allocate the people power to do that on a regular basis, and I think that could be a really good investment of time and energy in order to get at least that part of it taken care of, because that's something that can be done on an ongoing basis without, you know, this 10, 15-year planning window. So I was wondering what efforts, if the district is doing at this time towards that, and if not, I would really like to encourage the district to consider undertaking that as part of its regular functions.
Thanks for bringing that up. Actually, we do have a program for creek maintenance, and we work with all the towns. Last month, we did a site walk through all the creeks with Gerhard Epke, who's a consultant for Town in San Onofre. He does this yearly creek walk, and what he does is he addresses the concerns among each of the towns. We have a, the Flood Zone 9 fees do actually pay for a portion of the creek maintenance. We share that money with the towns. We have a stipend, so to speak. Once we prioritize what needs to be removed from each town and prioritize those, the towns are responsible for removing that, the specific trees or brush or whatever we prioritize, and then we reimburse the town for those efforts. So we've already begun that process. I don't know if you've seen the Conservation Corps out here cleaning some debris out, they typically do most of the work for the towns. And we've, you know, we should be finishing with that work by October 15th, which is, you know, consistent with our permits.
So if there is a particular project or problem, issues with Fairfax Creek, and we wanted to get that, you know, removed, what can we do as far as getting some help with any, removing any debris or fallen trees?
So I think it's Mark Lockaby is your representative that provides feedback on what things he needs removed, and, you know, he's actually in charge of bringing the Conservation Corps out and removing that type of material from the bridges or from the creeks. So we're in close coordination with them, along with our site assessment that Gerhard Epke did as well.
And what's the budget for this type of?
It's, each town gets, currently, it's, we split it evenly among the towns, $7,500 each town. However, we meet several times to assess if one town needs a little more and one town needs a little less. I think a couple of years ago, I think Larkspur spent a lot of money to remove debris because, you know, they had a lot more problems down there. I think Fairfax, maybe three years ago, had more problems and ended up spending a lot more money in Fairfax. So there's a very good camaraderie between the towns on who has the greatest need.
Sure, and I appreciate that, but that seems woefully underfunded for, you know, just the very important short-term benefit which would accrue. I would encourage, you know, to encourage the district to allocate more resources for that, because, again, that debris can make the difference between a close call and a real problem in a number of locations. I, you know, just generally would like to see more resources dedicated to that kind of preventative maintenance, especially because these detention basin projects are, you know, they're very long-term, capital-intensive projects. So anyways, just my perspective, I would really urge the district to, you know, increase the creek maintenance function. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Renee, did you want to have a question or comment?
No question. I'm interested, as we're sort of sailing into this, could you kind of draw the timeline of how we're going to reach the public? I know it started, and I've been to several of the meetings. What's the coordinated effort as we go forward so that these things don't feel to people as if they're being flooded at the very last minute?
Right, no, that's a good question. We, you know, our intent is to present at each of the local communities. So we've already gone out and done a couple at the Local Homeowners Association, and you know, Lefty and Loma and that area. We'll be doing the same thing as we do more work in Deer Park, as we do more work in the nursery site. Our intent is to meet with the local community as often as possible and get the word out and bring them along the way so we can get their ideas right up front.
I would just suggest that that's a great idea, but I think one of the things that would be very helpful is to come to this council periodically. This gets a really broad audience, and I know some folks, when you did my homeowners association, felt that they were left out. So I think we can think about something quarterly, every, maybe not quarterly, but let's think about really getting you on, or Katie, or someone on the agenda to really update us. Renee, I think you wanted to add, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Actually, I'm even thinking to be proactive, that we may need a hotline, like, really, Deer Park? And then they call all of us, and we say, hey, get some facts, here's where you call. Something like that to be, I mean, I don't think we can be more proactive enough when we throw out, you know, that there's this many more sites that are being considered. And believe me, in Fairfax, there's going to be great concern, and I think that we should give as many outlets as possible for people to voice their concerns, and then a way for them to get some factual information, where they can dispute whether it's factual or not, but we do need to make sure that as much as we know, we can give people access to, as we go.
Yeah, I totally agree. I mean, I've got a bunch of, I should have mentioned, I've got a bunch of handouts here of all the different detention basins I'm going to leave with you. We can provide these in digital format if you want to put them up on your website, or you can link to them on our website. In addition, we have a minimum of four advisory board meetings a year, which we present updates on all the projects. We've, we had a booth at the Fairfax Festival, we had a booth at the San Onofre Arts and Wine Festival. We're out there a lot, in addition to the homeowners association, so, you know, we'll continue to do that.
Don't get me wrong, you guys are doing a fabulous job in terms of this, but you just can never do too much.
Right, I agree.
Briefly, I just want to say one thing Renee said was a hotline. I've done a lot of programs working for various government agencies where people want somewhere to call, so I would suggest to you, Katie, that you all really consider having a, you know, place that people can call, ask questions, maybe they don't get an immediate answer, but think about doing that as well. So you have somebody manning that line and able to communicate back with people right away. So I think that's a great suggestion, Renee. John, you had a question?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I guess a couple of, one of the things that, you know, I mean, I can see a blockage where the creek side has, you know, subsided and partially blocking a bridge that I can see from my kitchen window. So it's of concern, you know, and I'm inquiring, you know, from Mark Lockaby, our, you know, the go-to guy who's dealing with this, and he's like, yeah, we know about it, but, you know, the $7,500 bucks is woefully short on the amount of money. So I guess, you know, that's kind of an underline of what Peter was bringing up. But my question is actually something that's more broad than just what I can see out of my window. Fairfax, downtown Fairfax is basically a retention basin for the rest of the Ross Valley currently, and we, in the '05 flood, it was, you know, depending on where you measured it, a foot and a half, couple feet deep. And your predecessor, Jack Curley, had, before, when we were talking about Lefty Gomez and Loma Alta as the detention basins that we're looking at in Fairfax, said, well, you know, basically, we'll probably reduce that foot and a half to maybe six inches to where, you know, sandbags will be more effective. And I think that's, you know, it's better, but, you know, there's still a lot of mud to mop out of areas and stuff, and sometimes it just comes up through the floor behind your sandbags in a lot of the downtown businesses, because it's built over old creeks, the old creek used to go down through downtown. So I guess it's kind of a question that you probably don't know the answer to yet, but with the modeling of these new basins that you're also looking at now, you know, Bothen with the Sunnyside Nursery and Deer Park and things like this, that model of exactly how much Fairfax would be flooding is probably going to change significantly. And it would probably help a lot with your PR, you know, as you come up with those numbers, I mean, you probably don't have those numbers yet in terms of how much Fairfax could be saved from a flood with these different detention basins at this point?
It'd be a little premature to talk about that. But I mean, there's some numbers they did back in the CIP study that, you know, that talked about potential reduction in flow depths in Fairfax, but, you know, it's kind of changed now with the different sites and really how.
I think what John's saying is that as you evaluate these various sites, having that number, the new number, would be very helpful, correct?
Yeah, that would be very important, I think, in your interactions with the public, because then they can see how different, what a difference that would make. I mean, this huge amount of money was lost from the community, you know, in just dealing with the flood. I mean, I know, well, everybody's paying flood insurance now too, but there's, you know, it caused the community a lot of money, and, you know, it's $7,500 is a drop in the bucket compared to that kind of loss. So I think that there'd be definitely support for, you know, more money for keeping the creek clean, but also, I think, going forward, letting people plainly see what a difference these different potential projects would make in terms of Fairfax and our business district and people's homes. I think that'd be important to put out there.
Thank you, John. David, did you have any questions or comments, ensure Flood Zone 9 member?
Yeah, maybe, I think I'm less, of course, I've heard Scott give the excellent presentation often, so, you know, I know that he's polished it up to a high gloss and is able to express, I think, in very human terms and non-technical terms for the community and the folks that are watching or listening in. I was more intrigued by your, all of your questions, because I think they reflect concerns that the community might have that are not yet fully understood. So when Scott says, you know, X dollars, that's X dollars per year for years going back and years going forward. The other part was, at the very beginning of this project, a guy by the name Matt Smelter, who's, you know, smarter than the average bear, went through all of our creeks and outlined, you know, almost foot by foot, what the concerns and the problems were. So these have been getting addressed now over the course of almost, you know, seven, eight, nine years, since the money started flowing from the flood fee, and even before that, during the litigation, when Hal Brown was able to access funds. that during the litigation when Hal Brown was able to access funds generously from that Board of Supervisors. So the money has been allocated to do a better creek, you know, do in-creek work so that, as I think Scott accurately put, we are able to hold, I think it was Katie who said, "We're able to hold as much in-bank as we're able to do humanly possible." I thought, Renee, it was very interesting, I've had a longstanding concern with people's obligations, and I've talked about that up here, particularly with some of our community members. The flood zone district actually went out and allocated, in the neighborhood of under $100,000, to bring in a PR firm, and I use the PR positively, to actually do a lot of community outreach. I thought that they sharpened the website and brought forward a lot of materials that assisted the public, organized different fairs and events. I think that becomes a point of diminishing returns. It becomes a community's obligation, a community member's obligation, to search out the material as long as it's readily available. So we have a good website. It contains a lot of information, I think, on two tracks, one for the casual reader who wants some information, but also, I think, for somebody who wants more technical background, and a lot of technical background has been, millions of dollars of technical background have been amassed and are uploaded onto that website. So I think folks have to take it upon themselves, their obligation, to figure out what they need to know about this looming problem and what we as a county are doing with their fee dollars. And I think so far, they're doing it effectively. Certainly, I have antagonized Scott to the point where I find it astounding that he doesn't, you know, isn't really, doesn't have a, you know, dartboard with my, well, maybe you do, have a dartboard with my face on it, because I antagonize, I think, sometimes over the top, with county staff on this issue to ensure that the Fairfax community is going to get its fair amount of flood protection, but also, I've been very impressed by the concept of all of the representatives on the advisory board taking an all-for-one and one-for-all approach. We could not solve this on our own, and we have to work with our sister municipalities to ensure that this is a valley-wide solution. And I think, at the end of the day, which is much too long for me, and I've antagonized on this issue as well, I think that we're going to see that we will have flood control as long as the heavens hold off and we're able to put these detention basins in place. I think the 100-odd items that we have on the list are going to net us out the kind of control. But I thought John brought up an excellent point, which is, I don't know, under, and I don't know if Scott knows or staff really knows, whether it's possible to hold back the torrent to the point where we are able to say, "Well, we have our detention basins, we have our creek improvements, we have this, we have that." I think that that comment by Jack Curley, your predecessor, years ago about getting to sandbag status might, at least in the near term, be as good as we get, but considering where it was before, that's certainly going to reduce the millions of dollars of danger, and even more than the mere dollars that are amounted, and I don't mean to diminish people's financial impact, but there was the very dangerous potential for loss of life during the 2005 flood. We almost lost a citizen, a firefighter. And so, as we have spoken at the flood zone meetings before, above all else, it is that protection of personal safety and members of the public and our staff that is paramount in this, and that's why the whole project is essential, and the speed to implement this project can't be possibly understated. But thank you all for your comments.
Thank you, David. I just want to add briefly, I'm hoping that the firm that was hired is not a PR firm, but a public participation firm, community engagement. I think it's more about engaging the community and getting their feedback rather than selling something.
And if I could buy back my words, I would say that that's exactly what they are. That's exactly what they are.
That was my perspective, and I just want to add one thing, is having done some pretty complex projects statewide in hazardous waste site cleanup, you can never do enough public participation. So I think that David's comments are well-taken, that there's a lot on the website. People learn things different ways, and we want to make sure that as we move forward, we don't expect that everybody is going to be happy with every component or all components, but we want to get as much buy-in, and so considering there are different ways to reach out, and first of all, being here tonight is helpful. But that being said, I would like it to open it up for public comment. We've had a number, oh, Katie wants to add something, and then we will open it up for public comment.
Yep, just a couple things. So on the communications/PR, one of the things, there's, we, there was a first phase in terms of what was created, templates, website update, the roadshow stuff, you know, just poster boards and information, but then also a whole nother set of information, fact sheets and fact Q and As, and actually a recommendation to put something sort of live on the web. It's a little bit, it's not a person manning the phone so much as a type in a question and actually pull from a fact sheet answers to those questions, because the questions tend to be the same from community to community, I mean, different specifics, but it's not, there's a lot going on, but there's a way to actually respond to individual questions as well as direct people to the website, as well as being present out in the community. But we are dealing with four different towns and a couple other communities, so these guys are pretty active out on the road. I wanted to say something else about the creeks and the creek cleaning, and I think David really covered well. It's a yearly, it's an annual investment. It doesn't sound like a lot of money, but frankly, I think there's the ability for a town to request some more, as was talked about, but it's also making progress, you know, in investment, year in and year out, and so that $5,000 or $10,000 does make a difference. But then even more importantly is the bridge, are the bridge replacements that are going on right now, and you've got one coming up, and there's a couple down in San Anselmo and one in Ross, and all of those bridge replacements, they're Caltrans projects, almost fully funded, 80% to 90% funded by Caltrans, and then flood fee kicking in, but those all represent those constriction points that you're talking about, when you have a blockage, they catch stuff, but even without the trees landing up against them, that's what shoving out and creating localized flooding during your smaller storm events, and they will not only help in the big event, but they're going to help in the smaller five-year and 10-year and 25-year storm event. So that's work that's going on that's really important, that helps keep our communities drier. And then with regards to the overall, how much are we going to reduce the flooding? How much can we, how much do we want to invest to? Getting down to sandbag level will make a huge difference. That'll mean sandbag level in places where it was two feet deep here or three feet deep here, and other places in your community, no flooding at all because the perimeter of the flooding shrinks as the level goes down. And that gets me to the question, or the suggestion, to be able to show on a map what will these detention basins do for an area, for a neighborhood? And the hydraulic or hydraulic model, I don't have the technical term, that was created by Stetson engineers and with Matt Smelter measuring the creek, and it's a very technical tool. It can run models on different scenarios, but it also costs a lot of money to do those, like 10 grand at a pop, but we've done them before, and I think that as we get, as we really do the screening and get to some really more, know what we're talking about in terms of the detention basins that make more sense, to create those models that show a neighborhood and what will happen to flood levels with a certain event, it makes a huge difference. We've done it before, but it's good to have that visual because it makes it real, so I think that's a really good suggestion. And it will make it happen as we get to a place where we really have, we know what we're talking about in terms of what we want to invest the money in. So again, community outreach is really important. I think that's probably the most important thing that we can be doing because these projects are going to not unfold or roll out quickly, and so it's a constant education and a constant keeping the community informed about what's going on, and hopefully they will continue, the community will continue to keep their minds open and towards exploring how do we address this flooding problem. We actually have solutions, and it's going to be about getting the details nailed down and then having the community walk along with us and stay on board and actually implement. So that's, I guess, what I want to say, probably too much.
Well, let's open it up to the public, and then we can bring it back, just because I think people have been patiently waiting. I just want to mention one thing, not everybody's online, so it'd be a good idea to think about a phone, but let's open it up to public comment. We have people that have been patiently waiting, or not. Frank, did you want to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Frank Agar, 13 Medway, Fairfax. I think John asked a key question. If all these detention basins are actually completed, built, completed, what is the reduction in the flood level in downtown Fairfax?
You were told that it reduces it from that serious flood level of feet, I think Katie put it correctly, down to a couple of inches, which is sandbag level, and that is the essential amount.
Oh, so it will reduce two feet of downtown Fairfax?
No, what I'm saying is whatever it was before, and who knows, without getting into the specifics of what the height was in each individual building, what the design to do here with the detention basins up front as the first initial part of a comprehensive 100-year flood reduction program is to reduce immediately down to sandbag level.
So that's two feet, roughly?
No, you keep on saying that, and I keep on saying that I'm sure as you go along from building to building, house to house, the amount goes up and down depending on where it is. What I'm saying to you is that uniformly, we, the goal here initially is to get us down to sandbag protection level.
Let's, okay, thank you, David. Let's let, Frank, go on, and go ahead, Frank.
We know the town hall, Fairfax Town Hall, where crosses the creek is a blockage, and we've known since the '50s that the large culvert under Sherman Avenue is totally undersized. That's a given. Doesn't matter, I mean, it can't handle, it can't handle the creek, and it diverts it to downtown. I don't know if, another problem is the high or king tides, and I don't know if they've modeled any of our rain events with the king, with the high and king tides that are going to affect the flows. I haven't heard anything about that. You know, another question I would have is, you know, if the San Anselmo voters reject Memorial Park Detention Basin, how does that impact what's going to happen in Fairfax? Will that mean more of the five option or six options have to be built if Memorial Park is rejected? You know, and one of the problems I see is there's no institutional memory here. I've attended at least half a dozen of the meetings and tried to, try to give some input. You know, so it's all consultant-driven, and I think we're giving folks false hopes here. We have to get really realistic here about what we're going to do and how we're going to deal with it, and so far, I don't see answers for Fairfax.
Nonsense. Let me take on each one of these issues, because it's important.
Before you do that, David, just a couple things. I noticed that Russ Evron is taking notes. Frank's brought up some points that are his perspective, and I want to make sure that just, I don't think this is kind of a debate or rebuttal. I just want to say that I heard Scott say and Katie say that some of this modeling will be done as they winnow things down, and I'm sure as we see what happens with the vote in San Anselmo, should Memorial Park not be considered, I think that would be part of the modeling that would be done. But I don't know that we should be in a rebuttal phase, but David, briefly.
No, no, it's, yeah, I know, but Barbara, you would also agree that you can't have a member of the community who's served on this council just throw out ideas and things and then just say, "Well, that's my opinion," and then walk away when there's knowledge in the room. So let's put some, let's put some meat on the bones, Frank. First of all, when you talk about it's consultant-driven, well, of course, it's consultant-driven. The county staff is ill-equipped, as almost any county would be, to have the kind of highly technical expertise here. But the one thing I will say, that the way that the advisory board meetings are run by the, you know, by the seven of us, is that no person is ever denied the opportunity to speak fully and frankly to that advisory board, and I notice that Katie attends a lot of the meetings, and certainly Nancy Hureid attends, I think, every meeting. And so there's full communication between the community back to the supervisor who runs the show here, and you have the members of the advisory board who represent all of the municipalities and three outlarge members of Sleepy Hollow and various other areas, able to digest and appreciate what community concerns are. And it has been rather robust in the discussion, particularly on the Memorial Park thing. Should the Memorial Park project go away, there will be a conversation about where that grant funding will go. One hopes that it will stay in the Ross Valley and move on to other projects, but it's a conversation for another day. As for the culvert issue, like any other project, you have to balance the bang for the buck, and while for Fairfax, certainly ripping downtown hall, tearing up Sherman Boulevard, daylighting the creek, buying the house at the end, and making sure that the floodwaters could flow free would be the dream of every flood control manager, that would probably be the end of the entire flood control budget right there. So the idea, and I think Scott is laying this out rather effectively, is you figure out what the flow is, and the detention basins are designed to hold that flow back up above Fairfax so that the idiotic culvert and the morons who put our town hall on top of the creek, we will not face that flooding again. So you're trying, instead of capturing and manipulating in downtown Fairfax what has already been done by idiots past, you're going back up the watershed and holding the water there. That's the goal, so that in downtown Fairfax, as John was concerned, we will get to sandbag level, not to flooding the town and blah, blah, blah. As for the king tides, I'll leave that to a technical person, that's clearly over my pay grade, but I believe if it hasn't been already, then I'm sure that the tidal influence, global warming, all these other issues will be fully addressed during the secret process.
Okay, thank you. So as far as, you know, when I mentioned institutional memory, I've been here in the Ross Valley since the '40s. My family owned property in San Anselmo in the '40s. Christmas Eve, '55, we lost an employee, Fairfax lost an employee down here behind Town Hall trying to clear, clear the debris, and that Town Hall extension wasn't even across at that time. We're just trying to clear, he was trying to clear debris, he was a volunteer firefighter and public works person, trying to clear the debris so we could flow through the Sherman Avenue underpass, the culvert. And again, I was here in '82, and I was here in 2005, and I've watched it flood from the top down, so, I mean, I try to impart a little wisdom to folks, and I've attended a number of these meetings, but no one seems to pay much attention, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Michael, do you want to just state your name and?
Michael McIntosh, a couple things. First one, David, for the terms of morons and idiots, generally hindsight is 20/20. When you look at someone's decision from the past, we realize it's a poor decision. But some of those decisions continue, as well as where I've offered the town of Fairfax for free, the land in my bridge that crosses the creek so that they can have it free and put it in a program, and instead of accepting my bridge so we could reduce those restrictions, the town council's comment to me was, "No, it might help me." So politics play a big part, and I do think this is consultant-driven. I would like to ask Katie and Scott and Russ and yourself, since you vote on these things, approximately how many pages have been generated? Plus or minus 10,000, please, or give me an estimate in your hands, please.
Michael, did you have other comments? We can have, I just want to say, did you have another question, and then we can have Scott try to respond to that question?
Well, it's actually, my question will actually parlay on that. So if I could please get a response to that, I'll stay with my time, please.
I imagine it's many hundreds of thousands of pages, but no. Katie, do you have an idea?
Hundreds of thousands of pages.
Okay. Okay, so, Michael, go ahead.
Well, I think even your idea of hundreds of thousands...
I'm wrong. I haven't been involved in the Flood Zone 9. There's probably a lot of pages, so why don't you just get to the crux of your question?
The crux to my question is, as I see with so many things... The crux to my question is, as I see with so many things, there are many, many reports that are created with our tax dollars all the time. And these reports are provided by staff and by people that don't live in the community that are inundated onto our town councils. I question each and every one of you if you've actually read every single page of every single report to truly make an educated opinion for when you vote on these measures and these matters. And so really, the crux of my question that I see in many of our local politics, we have volumes of reports on all subjects. And there's no way with all the committees that each and every one of you sit on, which I appreciate, have an opportunity to truly read all the reports that are generated all the time and make an educated opinion and educated decision on how to vote. So again, it's kind of like, get along with everybody, drink the Kool-Aid, and just go along the process. The questions I think that the public should ask themselves is how much has been collected for tax? And so far, what is our result? I see politics playing with Memorial Field and Deer Park and even my property. But I don't see a concise plan that says, hey, if we do something here, this is the result. Can we get support for this in our community?
Then you should read the website much more carefully. And I would also say, this is a very interesting thing that is a little different than I think what most council members deal with. It's an advisory board. None of the sites are within Fairfax. None of them are owned by Fairfax. The detention basin sites, they're all on our periphery. They're privately owned. They're school district lands, they're water district lands. But none of them are Fairfax lands. So the town of Fairfax will not be voting on its own property and saying you can or cannot go forward. Hold it. We also are being driven by a, it's an, I sit on an advisory board. The council generously appointed me some years ago to sit as their representative on an advisory board. On that advisory board, I aggravate for the project. I particularly aggravate, I think, more than all the other folks on there, combined to ensure that the project is as good as it can be and that it represents, what, in my opinion, the folks in Fairfax would like to see in detention basins on their periphery. That being said, we are taking votes that are advisory to the supervisors. And the supervisors, the five of them, will decide at Katie's urging and direction, how this project will go forward. So when you turn to the other four and say, "I doubt that all of you have read the gazillions of pages that have been there," except for the fact that I've read all the gazillions of pages that are there, and many of them are highly technical, many of them are highly technical, it's not their responsibility because ultimately, they will not be, nor will I, be voting on any particular project. That advisory board will make recommendations, and the supervisors, in their particular wisdom, will decide whether they will be funding those projects to go forward.
Well, I do hope that you've actually read all the pages because I would certainly encourage my support when I listen to your vote. But I just think that if each and every one of you, for all the politics, sit on, let's say, 20 committees, and each committee, whatever you represent, that staff provides all these reports and all the individual sequels and all the individual EIRs, I think there are physically not enough hours in a day to truly read all the supporting documentations for all the different committees that you guys represent or the liaison for to make an educated vote. And that's why I'm saying here that I think there is more documentation provided by our staff and by our consultants, which is a profitable industry, than really what we have the opportunity to understand. And I think that it could be streamlined so that we are included in a more educated vote, that's simply stated.
Thank you, Michael. I don't think we need to answer the question on the number of pages. There's a lot of them. Okay, thank you very much, Michael. Other public comment on this?
Mayor, I have a question.
Wait, before we, let's make sure we have no other public comment, and then we can bring it back to the council. No other public comment? Bring it back to the council. Peter?
Yes, thank you. And, you know, this is a highly, highly technical issue. And assessing what's best, what's the best solution, what is the most, provides the most efficacy, is a very complex issue. And I, for one, do want to look, I'm withholding any judgment until I get a chance to read the technical assessments and, you know, how much water will be held back for these very various projects and the cost-benefit analysis. And that is a big task. But, and I think it's difficult until all that work's been done before people can weigh in, both the public and, of course, ultimately, the supervisors in a course of action. But I did want to ask, and this came up before Frank's comments, Scott, if you are, in your current planning, factoring in sea level rise, because as we've seen in storms like Katrina, that can have a huge impact on the ability to drain upstream. And I just wanted to know if you're factoring in sea level rise, because these projects aren't going to come to fruition for many years. And of course, sea level rises will be happening concurrently.
Yeah, so both climate change and sea level rise will be addressed as part of this SEQA process. So, and as you probably know, I mean, the tidal influence obviously impacts the town of Ross more than it does the town of Fairfax. So as far as the backwater impacts associated with a one-foot increase or a two-foot increase will actually dissipate by the time it hits the town of Ross. And so you would not see necessarily a direct correlation to water surface rises in the town of Fairfax. But just so you, you know, the short answer is yes, we're going to be addressing this.
Thank you, Scott. Other questions of the council? Or we can, first of all, I want to thank Supervisor Rice, Scott, and Russ, and thank David for all his efforts on the flood control district. We really appreciate, and Nancy for coming. Nancy Vernon, who is tireless and sits through all these meetings, as well as many other duties and volunteer work. So we really appreciate you coming. And I do think it would be a good idea, when we get to pivotal points before decisions are made, to try to come to this council as well. I realize you guys are stretched really thin. But thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it. I think we should take a five-minute break, if everyone's okay with that.
Yes.
I just want to announce, we're going to reorder the agenda because we have some folks waiting here for one of the items. So a couple of things we're going to do is we're going to move the council member reports and the town managers' report till after the regular agenda before the special meeting. And we are going to move, what's the item number?
Seven.
No, no, I know that. What is the item number that, oh, so we're going to, before we take up item seven, we're going to take up item 11 because we have two folks that have been patiently waiting in our audience for that item. So we're going to take number 11 first, and then we will do number seven. And when we get to the end of our regular agenda, we'll do our council member reports and town managers' reports. Then we'll adjourn the regular meeting, and then we will move on to the special meeting. So with that, I think we have a little technical difficulties going on under the table. Oh, okay, there's...
There we go.
Oh, so I think David broke the microphones. That's all right, David. We're, we all get... Is your microphone working, Garrett?
It is.
Okay, so let's do the staff report for the discussion consideration of retrofitting streetlights with LED fixtures and participating in PG&E programs to manage and finance the retrofit project. With that, take it away, Garrett.
Okay, so as background, you may know that your, the town's climate action plan has a action item called EM12, which states, "Continue to replace streetlights and parking lot lights with energy-efficient technologies such as LED lighting." The CAP, or the Climate Action Plan, does estimate if we were to replace our streetlights with LED lights, we would save about 10.5 million metric tons of CO2 gases. So the town has about 550 streetlights. We've retrofitted in the past 48, so there's about 550 remaining. And then what I'd like to point out before I move on is you do have a supplemental...
Just quickly, you said we have 550, ooh, mine is too loud. And we've retrofitted about 48, and then you said we have 550 left.
Sorry, I misspoke. It's, we have 550 streetlights remaining to be retrofitted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And I'd like to just direct you to the supplemental staff report that we gave you. Attached to that has a couple of spreadsheets with the cost estimates. But more importantly, it kind of breaks out really the two scenarios that we're, that staff is suggesting to the council. So how I like to break it out is, the first scenario is something that we call replacing the town's Cobra head streetlights. There's about 400 or so remaining. So one option is just to replace all the Cobra heads in town. Ultimately, what that does is, oh, before I do that, so there's, actually, let me go back. There's two options. One is replace all the Cobra heads in town, and that's about 400 or so. And the other is replace all the Cobra heads plus about 70 top hat fixtures. And those are the ones in the downtown area. And we'll touch on option two a little bit more. Obviously, there's more options, but those are the options that staff's kind of recommending. We get some direction from the council. So, under the scenario of replacing the Cobra head lights only, that would cost about $70,000. And what we're recommending is we participate in something that's known as PG&E's on-bill financing program. Essence, what that is, it allows us to finance the replacement, retrofitting of the lights. So pretty much how it works is if we, if it's $70,000, it goes on to our PG&E bill. They make an estimate of what the energy savings would be, and that's applied toward the payment. So, under that scenario of just replacing the Cobra heads, the town would save about $18,000 a year in annual energy and maintenance costs. So for PG&E, which only uses the energy savings, it'd be about a five-year payback. We wouldn't put any money out of pocket. And during that timeframe for replacement, I mean, for repayment, how it works is our energy savings, PG&E charges us the same as they do now. They take the savings, apply it to the loan. At the end of the five years, we'd be done. And then after that, we would achieve the energy and maintenance savings over time. Now, option two differs in the sense that what it tries to do is maximize our participation under the PG&E financing program. What that means is we could replace all the Cobra heads in town, as well as about 70, what we refer to as, again, the top hat fixtures in downtown. And so how that works is that would be about $155,000 in the loan. And I should point out, that's less, that's net of any rebates we would receive from fixtures. So we'd be financing about $155,000 under that program. And what, how that worked, what that works out to is that is about $85,000 more than just doing the Cobra heads alone. And how that works is it would be a 10-year payback. So it would take us 10 years to repay that loan from our energy savings. In terms of the incremental costs, if you were to think about it, those 70 fixtures, the top hat fixtures, will cost $85,000 of that $155,000. And we'll receive about $2,000 in energy and maintenance savings just from those 70 fixtures. And probably should point out, the reason for that is the top hat fixtures are more expensive than the Cobra heads. And really, the energy savings is just smaller. So I think what we use in example is Cobra heads, you would save $45 a year per light in energy savings and maintenance costs. And the top hat fixtures, you only save $29. There's a difference of $16 each fixture, and that's why it's a longer payback period. Now, that being said, one of the reasons to pursue replacing the 70 top hat fixtures is, one, it is consistent with your climate action plan in trying to reduce greenhouse gases. Greenhouse gases, I'm sure, has some type of environmental and economic value associated. That's not calculated in here because we couldn't really calculate that. But that's one of the reasons for doing the 70 fixtures. Now, those are your two options that we're putting out there. And the other thing is that we wanted to get direction on is something on, known as the PG&E basically turnkey program. And what that is, is PG, you can contract with PG&E, and they will manage the entire project for you. And when I say manage, that includes selecting the vendor, making sure the vendor meets your purchasing standards. That includes purchasing all the fixtures. That includes installing all the fixtures. They give us a warranty, and they do all the administration. Now, but what that means is there is an administrative cost associated with that. So most likely, you wouldn't be able to replace as many lights. But the benefit to all that is that, one, with staff not having to be involved, we could probably do the project quicker. We may be able, might be able to, they might be more cost-effective. And one of the big things about the program is PG&E handles all the paperwork for the rebates and their financing. So if we were to do it ourselves, we would actually have to upfront, pay the money upfront. So if we do the top hat fixtures and the Cobra heads, that's $155,000. The town would actually have to pay that money upfront, pay it all. And then when the paperwork's processed by PG&E and the project's completed and inspected by them, then they give us a check for $155,000, and then the financing program kicks in. Under the turnkey program, they handle everything. We don't need to come out of pocket any money unless we, unless we want to for some additional type of services or something. And so that's really the main benefit. So really, what we're looking for is direction. Before we go through all this paperwork and figure out what we need to do, one is how many fixtures you would like to place. Two, is it okay to explore the turnkey program? Ultimately, everything comes back to you for approval. So a turnkey agreement will come back to your approval. If for some reason, you know, staff thought it was too much, we would say, okay, let's just do it, let's just do it ourselves. But it would be pretty time-consuming because you would have to prove the agreements with the contractors. We need agreements, and we would need to manage the project. So with that, that concludes the staff report.
Questions of the council? I see Renee reaching for, oh, David?
Quick one. When we were talking about this earlier today, Garrett, could you remind me, probably not with the top hats, but with the Cobras, the new LED bulbs, will they, I think of the LED, the current bulbs as more flood in nature. Will the new bulbs provide more directed light?
Yeah, I believe the bulbs would be more directed downward light. But with the inner proposal, we'd also look at, some lights have light shields now, so we had something we can also look at.
Well, I raise it because I hadn't thought of it earlier today, but when the young woman was making her presentation, we had a presentation, maybe you remember it, Light Pollution, some years ago. And I was thinking about that, young woman from Drake, I think. And, you know, it kind of didn't progress beyond, I think she had a meeting with me and maybe Linda and Jim, whatever. But I'm thinking here, maybe this begins to get us toward where we want to go on that environmental issue, which is an externality that I'm sure Bruce would discuss as well. So I would just like it to, you know, sort of sit in the back of our minds while we're contemplating the benefits of this.
Just one caution, and that's a good point, and I will let other people speak. When it was done in Canyon Village, we replaced all the lights with LED. The first lights that were put in were too bright, and it was redone. So if we go with this option, piggybacking on to what you're saying, we have to be really cautious if we go with the turnkey or whatever we do, that we make sure that we're having the right amount of light. I don't know how you decide what that is, but I know we had to redo all of them in Canyon Village. Go ahead, John.
Yeah. I mean, Fairfax also replaced a lot of the downtown lights with LEDs, and this was under the previous town manager. And yes, too bright, lights that are too bright, lights where the bulbs don't fit in the existing fixtures. And then you've got to pick other fixtures that will accommodate lights that'll be functional for how much light is needed there. Yeah, the LEDs are really bright. The color temperature of the light is, in the past, that's been a big issue for a lot of people because that really cold blue light was very common in the old LEDs. And as I understand it, LEDs are evolving quite a bit now. Having control over that is something that gives me pause with just the turnkey PG&E solution. And I guess that's a question that needs to be answered, is how much control will we have with that? And maybe, do you know that right now?
Yeah. So I'm waiting for a proposal from PG&E. But in essence, it's no difference than if you had a contractor. You have 100% control because there's only so many different fixtures. So you could pick the fixture. The lighting is structured so that the LED output is equivalent to what is there now. That is the thought pattern. Now, that being said, having... Now, that being said, having replaced lights, LED lights before where I came from, you know, obviously, when it's in the field, sometimes it's a little different, but thus, that's why we have light shields and so on. But we're thinking, if, if we understand everything correctly, that you should, that shouldn't be a problem. But, that being said, the initial contract and what we're looking at ultimately will come to the council. So, coming to the council will say, this is what the light is, this is what it looks like, this is, to answer all your questions, what, you know, how it shines, what color it is, and so you'll have all that opportunity to chime in.
Cool. That sounds good going into it, when the rubber meets the road later. I mean, we found out the hard way there, as did Canyon Village, that, you know, there's, yeah, it's, it's good to go slowly, as you suggested, Barbara, just so that we don't get too far into some, you know, on the wrong track. And it's kind of, you know, it was a different track. It's, another question is, is we use Marin Clean Energy for Town Hall and things like this, and there's various good reasons to do that. PG&E owns the lights.
I looked into this when we first started it.
Yeah.
With government, you have to work with PG&E. MCE does not have the ability to do that. I specifically actually started this work as part of the Climate Action Committee, and I said, "MCE," and MCE said, "We cannot work with government, so you must work with PG&E." So that's why, that's what we're doing.
So that's a done deal, yeah, and I'm just like, okay, are we committing ourselves? And I guess we're already pre-committed.
Well, there is no option to work with MCE.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, it's fun, we've all done our homework, but I, I'll be interested to hear what Bruce shares. I don't know if that's, this is the time yet, Bruce, but, because I did ask the same question, and Bruce came back with a slightly different response.
Okay, well, I specifically am a board member of this committee.
Okay, I'm not arguing, I just, I, I'm glad we're all thinking this way.
Okay.
But I did have a question.
Go ahead.
And I, you know, I can't help but ask, but given that the top hat fixtures are four times more expensive, in terms of the bulb replace, replacement, what would go in there, right? It says in the staff report, four times more expensive.
Yes, it's the entire fixture, though.
The entire fixture. So, is there some cost benefit analysis in look, you know, that, that we might go through to look at the fixtures themselves? Well, I'm just wondering if it's four times, it's kind of extreme, and we're talking about whether we're going to be able to put LED in or not, and maybe we need to look at the fixtures.
The fixture costs for the top hat fixtures don't change between the different fixtures, is my understanding, plus there aren't that many. So really, the question to the council, and I think the staff report did some basic analysis really, is for the council to determine if you believe the cost benefit of the fixture, meeting your goals of the cap and reducing greenhouse gases, offset the added cost in repayment period. And, and that's really the core question to the council, is direction to staff as to, is that worth it to pursue, and how are you going to decide?
No, I understand, but I'm wondering about the fixtures.
I think your question is, should you switch the fixtures to Cobra head fixtures instead of top hat?
You can't, you can't, because our poles are different. The Cobra heads hang on town, I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question. But the Cobra heads hang on telephone poles, for the most part. Some are separate poles, that's true, but our Town Hall, I mean, in downtown, they're more of the green lower poles, and those are quite specific for decorative fixtures.
Okay, so it's a style, it's a type of fixture.
Unless you replace the entire pole.
Got it. Thank you. Okay.
Peter?
Yeah, I, I, good points raised by John about, you know, too much light or the wrong kind of light, and a couple, couple things to look into. One is, these are rated by wattage, but I wonder if the specs indicate how many lumens or units of light. And then, I'm wondering, two, if, if we can try a few out, maybe in a couple of different locations, and just to see what they actually look like, because, you know, if we do the whole town with one type of bulb, we may be, it may be overkill, and so we may want to look at that carefully and also look at the color. Another issue that I ran into when I was doing some research on the internet is, anecdotally at least, there are a lot of things on the internet about utility LED lights causing a lot of very annoying flickering, which could be a real issue, especially, you know, at a residential setting where someone can't get to sleep because the light's just flickering. So, I think that needs to be addressed in terms of, you know, really seeing if we, we can be sure, assured that we won't have this problem, and then also, you know, what's our redress? Because if we do the whole town and they're all flickering, that could be a real, real issue. And I did a little bit of analysis, rough analysis, of the costs benefits of just doing the Cobras only, because the top hats are a lot more expensive. And just some rough figures, the savings of just doing the Cobras would be about $195,000 in terms of the, the savings over this 15-year period. And that would compare with savings of about $105,000 if we did the Cobras and the top hats. So, there's about a $90,000 difference between just doing the Cobras and, you know, settling for less than perfect with the top hats. So that's one, I, I was trying to quantify it in terms of, of the dollar investment. And then, it would be good to also quantify the total electricity savings in terms of, you know, kilowatt hours over this timeframe, and maybe, it wouldn't be too hard to get some, convert that to, say, greenhouse gas savings, so that we know what benefit in terms of greenhouse gas savings we're getting by doing everything, and it costing us $90,000 more over the course of 15 years. Maybe it's worth it, maybe it's just, it's not, something to think about in our calculus. And, you know, the thing that is attractive about it is, in a sense, we're using money, it's no out-of-pocket for us, which is very attractive, and, and the finance, very, some very creative financing. But, those are the issues that I see, want to make sure that we don't have the flicker, which would be just a real disaster, or that we can have some kind of redress for that. I think it's good to try them out a little bit before we sample, before we buy the whole thing. And then, I think it would be good to quantify real specifically the electricity savings and greenhouse gas savings, so that we can see if it's worth it, just, you know, that extra, lose $90,000 in savings to get that extra, you know, benefit in greenhouse gas reduction, so be able to see the cost benefit of that. The, those would be my kind of initial responses to this, but it, it is a very creative program to, to reduce our greenhouse gases overall.
I just want to comment a couple of things, is, first of all, I would urge us to do more rather than less. I agree with the idea of looking at a few and making clear that we don't end up with lights that are too bright and people complain. I haven't heard of LED flickering, that's more fluorescent light, but I haven't looked on the internet as well. Okay. So we want to be careful with that, but I really want to urge us to do as many as possible, and my thoughts are, when we do get the estimate on the turnkey, that, you know, finding out what that would cost us and what kind of out-of-pocket that would be before we immediately go to the idea of doing less. I think ultimately, energy savings and trying to quantify precisely greenhouse gas savings, it's, I'm not sure that it's worth it. I know where we are with our goals, with our climate action plan, is to change them all out. So, that would be my thoughts, maybe I'm doing this too broad brush, but with these kind of caveats that have been raised by Peter, John, about color, flickering, if we can really work the, these kinds of things out. I personally say working on a turnkey is more appealing to me than working with individual contractors where you, where we're doing it, we might have less ability to redress than working directly through PG&E. I do want to reiterate, when this first came up in the Climate Action Committee, is every time I see something that we can do, I sort of push for it, and I'm probably a little bit of a pest with our town manager on this, but I wrote MCE at the highest levels directly saying, "We'd like to work with you on this," and at the highest levels, they came back saying, "We would love to work with you, but we do not do the government programs." So, let's open it up to public comment. We have two members of the public who have been sitting diligently waiting. Bruce?
Thank you, and appreciate moving it up on the agenda. So, I don't know if I can get all this into three minutes, but there, I can answer some of those and, some of those questions, and others, I just think they're good questions, and I appreciate our need to step through this stepwise. I think the clearest thing is the, the, what MCE can do and what PG&E can do, as, as I understand it, and as Renee said, we did, Renee, Renee called me and asked me to look into this, and I did, and I got back to her, so what we, what the information we got, what we were talking about, Renee and I were, was the, first of all, is anything about what the town is currently doing through MCE going to be affected by this? The answer is no, not at all. And secondly, does MCE, who is our electricity provider in town, does MCE provide the electricity for streetlights? And the answer is yes. MCE does provide the electricity for the streetlights and will continue to. So, I believe that separate question is what you, Barbara, were talking about, which is that PG&E is administering these funds, and I, I'll bet these are our conservation funds, but I don't know. Anyway, PG&E is administering this program, which gives us the zero-interest loan, and also would provide a turnkey program, which is probably PG&E just using their own people and then making a profit on it, they're just basically acting like contractor, but I'm not sure. But those two levels of programs that PG&E is, is offering us, that Garrett has found out about, are the programs to install the streetlights. That's different from the purchase of the power. So the purchase of the power is and will remain through MCE. The install program and the financing program is available through PG&E, which may not actually be PG&E money, it may actually be our public money, but I'm not sure of that. Okay, if that's clear. Comments about the kind of lights, I couldn't agree more, that was some of my first questions. Other things that weren't mentioned tonight, they're dimmable streetlights. The Cobra head streetlights are available in a, in a form to where they have a motion sensor on them, and if nobody's around, it goes dim. Still is on, but it goes dim, and then as someone walks down the street, it'll brighten up, to sort of brighten the path for them. Saves a little bit of electricity, but probably more importantly, it just is less light pollution. Not only is light pollution a matter of what shines up in the sky, it's also a matter of just what shines in your window at night, and so that's a significant issue if one of those happens to be shining in your window. I would love to look into them. So, one of my questions that I'll just direct toward Garrett as he further explores this, if we decide to do this, would be to make sure that with, if we did go with the turnkey program where PG&E does the installation, I would have two questions. One is, what does that cost relative to not doing the turnkey and finding suppliers ourselves, finding a vendor ourselves to do the installation? Because if PG&E is charging an exorbitant amount for the fact that we don't have to even go find a vendor, maybe it's worth finding a vendor. Doesn't necessarily mean we have to go out there and do it ourselves, we can hire somebody to do it, but maybe we can hire somebody for half the price that PG&E charges. So I would just look into that. I do certainly see the point that just directing town staff to go out and do it with their spare time is not realistic. So, finding a vendor is, is certainly the way to go, but it, the vendor doesn't have to be PG&E. But the other question with, that's, that's one question with the turnkey program, what does it cost? And the other question with the turnkey program is to make sure that we still have the ability to choose the product, that we still get to choose the, the light itself. As, I forwarded an email back to, to Renee from Lindsay Wood, formerly Lindsay Haskell, who's, goes by the name the LED lady, and she's been promoting LED lighting for many years here in the county. She, she was offering, I wrote to her about this, and she was offering to help the town pick, if you, if you do put out a request for a bid for the, the lights themselves, the LED Cobra fixtures, she said there are a number of different vendors that sell a number of different ones, and she could make sure that the bid got out to as many people as possible. I would highly recommend that you take her up on that offer, just to make sure that we hear from the people who have the best things. The idea of trying a few of them, once we find a couple of the front runners of the, of the fixtures then, or of the, of the Cobra lights, trying a couple of them, just so we can see whether, what they look like, certainly makes sense, it's what I would do if I were buying that many light bulbs that were that expensive to replace. Things like the color temperature and the being too bright, those things I think can be addressed, we just make sure that we're looking at the right ones. But, the, the, what we have right now is called low-pressur sodium, and it gets into flickering sometimes. When those things are burning out, they get to where they do this thing for a few months before they finally expire, that is truly annoying, so.
So... Wait, let me ask you a quick question.
Yeah.
So you're saying that, once that thing begins to do what John's properly concerning us about, when you see that thing begin to flicker, it's about ready to go on to its...
He's talking about the current lights.
Not talking about LED, but the kind of lights that we have now.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's actually a completely different thing. I mean, it's, it's a ramping up and down kind of thing that you can see. The thing that LEDs do, I mean, you, you can really notice it if you move your eyes fast past an LED, and basically, it, it's turning on and off many, many times a second. And, you know, it's just a feature of the LED thing, and they're dimming it down by...
Well, it depends on, depends on the lamp. Some of them are, are at such a high frequency, some of them are a DC, they, they really are made a lot of different ways.
Yeah.
And there are a lot of LED lights in the county that we can go look at, like on the Richmond Bridge, on this, on the Marin side of Richmond Bridge.
Sure, they have these little panels.
There's LEDs, those little rectangular things, there's, there are a number of them in, in San Rafael. So, there's some places where we can actually look around at night and see a few versions of them, but those aren't the only ones that are available. But, yeah, we should definitely be careful about the quality, about the appearance, about the color temperature, look at the dimmability thing, that could be very helpful, and look at the warranty, you know, make sure that there's a warranty on the thing.
Sure.
Because, and the warranty should, should cover something about replacing it, because the cost of the fixture is the small part of it, the big part of it is the cost of bringing out a cherry picker and going up there and fixing it. Which is one of the things that, that, that Garrett mentioned in the original staff report, is that there is an immediate savings, even though we have no, if we, if we go with the financing thing, we have no out-of-pocket expenses, but we also have no savings for a certain number of years. Then, that pays off the loan, then's when we get the savings. Now, I, I thought I was prepared for tonight, but I now find that there was a supplemental staff report that I didn't see, so, sorry, I don't have any of those figures, and I would love to be able to look at those.
I think we can share that with you, Bruce.
Well, I imagine you could, but I can't, you know, I'm not fast enough.
Not right now. We can share it with you subsequently. Remember, tonight, we're just giving some direction, there's no final decision.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Bruce.
So, yeah, I think the, the way it sounds like it would work with the financing is we would have no out-of-pocket expenses, but we would also have no, no savings for a certain amount of time. But it would all be precisely calculatable, because the way that, that streetlights apparently are billed is they're just billed, they, they take the wattage on the nameplate of the streetlight, and they just bill you a fixed amount per month for the number of streetlights you have in town. So your streetlight billing is just fixed, it's not really a meter. The streetlights have, aren't even on an electric meter, they're coming straight off the wires, because otherwise, they would have to run all those wires and all those meters out there, it's not even worth metering them, they know exactly what they are, so they just run them right off the wires. And so, you can precisely know, knowing your electric rate, you know what your streetlight bill is going to be, it's just fixed, as, as I understand it. And so it would also be fixed for the LEDs. So, once you select your LED version, you should be able to find out, just, you can look right online and see PG&E. you can look right online and see PG&E's billing tariff, and you can figure out exactly what it's going to cost. And that would be your electric, your electric price for the streetlights. Right now, streetlights are costing $31,000 a year for the electricity, not counting the maintenance. So, this isn't only a greenhouse gas issue, this is a cost issue. After five or 10 years, I would, I would love to see us do all of them. After 10 years, we would then finish paying off the loan and then we would be down to probably a quarter or less of that. And even before that, we save maintenance.
Thank you, Bruce. Um, I think one of the suggestions I have to think about is we don't have to make a final decision tonight, so we may not have to make a final decision on option one or two. Um, maybe, oh, I see a quizzical face, but Cassidy, do you want to step up? Did you want to say anything?
Cassidy Baker, Climate Action Committee. Um, everything that Bruce said is genius. Everything that he said. Um, but also, I just, Peter, like, I don't know if you've walked downtown and noticed that there are 48 LED lights, which I like to call the acorn style rather than top hat, but, um, they're already there. So, if you do go downtown and you stand, like, in front of the coffee roastery and you look, you can see, you can see the difference. And so, when we first started talking about this program, it really was to bring, to make the downtown consistent and cohesive. And so, it's amazing that there's actually an option to do all of the Cobra lights, too. And I don't know what those would look like. And then, I also wanted to say thank you to Barbara and Garrett and whoever else for changing out the Christmas lights for, to LEDs.
Yeah, the great news is, I was, um, I was pushing Garrett, I was going online to find them, because they were on sale. And I said, "Let's buy them now." He said, "Well, we'll put it on, on this staff report." And then, as he was trying to respond to me, he said they'd already been done.
What are you talking about?
The Christmas lights have, or the holiday lights have already been changed to LED last year.
Ah, okay, thank you.
So, that was another thing that was on the list for the Climate Action Committee, and I keep ticking off this list and probably ticking off our town manager by bringing up all these things.
That's reportedly $2,000.
Yeah, two... Yeah, that came up at our, at our Climate Action Committee. Bruce had met someone who calculated energy costs and did say, "By not having LED lights," I find it hard to believe that holiday lights are $2,000, but, um, it's a significant cost that we don't have, because now we have LEDs. So, let's bring it back to the council. Thank you both. John is pushing on that button. I can see it now. I just want to say, um, one of the suggestions I had was, because we don't have to make the final decision tonight, um, is it possi, I mean, my personal view would be, let's push for getting all the Cobras and a bunch of these top hats, and I would push for the 70. That's my personal opinion. I don't know that's, that's everyone's opinion. But is there a big problem with continuing both options for when you actually bring it to us? Can you explain? Because I did see the quizzical face.
I was quizzical in the sense that I was thinking you wouldn't provide any direction. But, yes, how it works, and just to answer some questions on the turnkey program, under any scenario, well, how it works is PG&E actually doesn't install the lights. It's a third-party vendor. Actually, we work closely with the county and PG&E in coming up with these cost estimates. And actually, a contractor who's installed these before for another town, currently working for another town, this is actually a lot of their analysis. And actually, I don't think it'd be that different from what they actually submit when we look for work. So, it's the price of the fixture installed. The contractor, PG&E, whoever, in this case, the contractor would get it from the vendor. I don't know how that works. PG&E gets discount pricing, so they have it all kind of worked out. So, that's how it works. So, it's really a one-stop. But you're, you're correct. Really, the only added cost is PG&E administering the contract, you know, doing the bid, getting the contractors, and so on. So, the caveat to all this is, I have no idea what the administrative cost is. And I would agree, if it's some outrageous number, probably makes sense to do it ourselves, even though it'd be very time-consuming and very staff-intensive. But, I'm kind of waiting to see. But to answer the mayor's question is, yes, I don't have a problem. I can ask him for two proposals. One Cobra Heads only, one Cobra Heads and Top Hats. I got all the other comments, all great comments. Uh, I think doing a pilot demonstration, a good idea. We might have to pay for that out-of-pocket. I'll talk to them. I have done that before. And then, what I did was, you send something out and you ask everybody to look at it at night and tell us what they, what they think.
I'm sorry, what about what Cassidy just shared, that we can already see them? There, there are, they're the one, so we can look at color.
They're different.
Oh, they're different.
There's a ton of different options.
The, the ones that she's referring to, the acorn, uh, that's not the Top Hats fixture. Uh, how we did is, we replaced the bulb or the globe. I don't think those are available under this program, because of the change in technology. And so, that's why we're doing something else. So, what will happen is, you will have fixtures in downtown that will not match. The 48 will not match the 70 or whatever number, um, that you would like to do. Obviously, you could change them out in the future, but you wouldn't get any energy savings since you're already achieving those savings. And so, that's just something you could think of. But yes, I can go ahead. I, I really just, as staff, we just needed direction on what to ask PG&E. And getting two proposals, that's not a problem.
I understand the reason why we don't have any turnkey, um, cost estimates, is because the person was on vacation and hasn't provided them yet. So, stay tuned for that. John, you had something?
Well, I guess you're saying that, are these new top hat fixtures, we won't be doing the same approach as the last one, where we basically inserted an LED lighting device within our existing fixtures?
That's correct. So, the top, the fixtures on the top of the pole, that'd be a new fixture.
And it would look different.
It won't, it won't match the existing fixtures, but the 70 will match each other. I remember you replaced.
Yeah, well, they'll be the same as each other, but, yeah. Well, I guess it'd be interesting to see what these new top hat fixtures look like, because we got a lot of feedback on that the last time around.
Right. There's only so many limited ones, but we'll, we can figure it out.
But it'd be good to, good to get a picture of what they look like.
Yeah. Oh, I can definitely get your brochures, but the key will be, we'll see what we can do, because a lot of times, putting it on the pole will give you an idea. So, we may, maybe an idea is we spend money and put them all on.
Buying a few of them and putting them in.
Right. We do a few and you can pick and choose.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I, I sense that the direction is, let's continue looking at both options. Let's bring it back with the turnkey. Let's make sure that the good comments about flickering, about different colors, considering a pilot, which it sounds like you're really feeling like, you know, before we embark on something and then have people complaining, because I wasn't on the council when the complaints came in, but they trailed over to when I was on the council. So, it would be great if, if you can bring that back, you know, and let's kind of see what we can do, because my personal opinion is, if we can get more of these done, great. As long as we don't have out-of-pocket, or it's not huge out-of-pocket, why not? Because I think our goal ultimately is to try to change them all out. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would support very much what you're saying, but I think spending a little right now to, just for our own and the public's education, just to have a few of, like, we're talking about this one, or that one, or that one. And that, you know, we're, obviously, we're buying these fixtures to put them in. But just, because seeing is believing. It, it wasn't until those other fixtures were in that anybody gave any feedback. And, and, yeah, you definitely want to get that ahead of installing a whole bunch of these.
So, that'll be something I'll be discussing with PG&E, to see if they can do it like that. Save us the trouble of contracting directly to do it. But the worst-case scenario is, we would just contract with, um, the firm we use now to maintain the streetlights, and they would just buy and install the different variations. But before we get that, we would come back to council and kind of get your direction on how things are going to work.
I think John's reiterating the idea of a pilot. I would also say that, no matter what we do, even with a pilot, there are still going to be people that may not be happy with certain aspects. But a pilot is a great idea. Peter, did you have a quick thing, so we can move this along?
Yeah, just a, a couple of things. Um, are we, under this program, can we pick which bulbs we want, or are we limited to just PG&E's specifications?
You are limited to those fixtures that meet the guidelines for, will qualify for the rebate.
Okay, but is there enough where we could find, you know?
Well, it depends what you mean by enough. But is there more than one yes?
Enough choices, okay.
Yes.
Uh, and then, I, I would like to just see, just a, a quick calculation of the actual energy savings of doing all of the top hats, too, just so we can get a clear picture of...
Oh, you mean all the top hat. Oh, yeah, I can get you that. All we have to do is change the number in the spreadsheet.
Yeah, and, um, it'd be good to get a handle on that. Uh, and it, just in terms of weighing things. And I think under this program, we would have to, would only, this would be our only shot to do all the top hats all at once under this program. So, that might weigh towards doing them all.
This is, are you suggesting, so there's 70 top hats, we're proposing an option two. Are you suggesting the rest of the top hats, which I guess is about another 60 or something? I don't think it's 48.
No, actually, to answer your question, if you do every light in town, which is remainder of top hats, you would be financing $170,000 in the PG&E program, and the town would need to pay $65,000 out-of-pocket, because the PG&E program only finances energy savings based on a 10-year period. So, to do everything in town, not the existing 48 retrofitted, it's $170,000 plus $65,000 out-of-pocket.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not suggesting taking on that extra $65,000. I just want to consider, you know, possibly just not doing any, in, any of the top hats and just, I, I just want to see what the greenhouse gas savings are versus the cost.
Okay, so, greenhouse, yes, I believe their proposal will have some of that information.
Okay.
All right, so this, do you have enough direction, Garrett? Okay, thank you, and thank you, Bruce and Cassidy, for staying so long. We appreciate that.
Not on this issue, but you're, you're raising an interesting point. Before I was on the council, sitting out there, and they were, the council members at that time were thinking about the redesigning of Center Boulevard, and they chose the one that was this, one that we were stuck with, because the other ones, they were better. They were more interesting, kind of curvy, kind of more interesting, more design attentive. They were more expensive, but they were better. Um, so, I, I guess I'm with Barbara on this. You have your moment, even though it might be more expensive, you got to grab it, because heaven knows what's going to happen down the road.
I'm all in favor of grabbing the moment. I just want to quantify what that moment costs, what the actual savings are, so we know what, what the benefits are. I ju, I just like to make an informed decision.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Now, thank you, Bruce and Cassidy, and hopefully you'll have time to get home. And, well, I'm hoping, since you live close. Um, okay, we're going to go on to item seven, which was authorizing the vice mayor to send a letter to the Metropolitan, MTC, requesting them to fully fund ABAG for FY 1516 and to expand their evaluation of the potential consolidation of MTC and ABAG planning departments. Karen, maybe you just do a quick, very quick run-through, because I think really there just was some comments on this item.
Really, the core issue is, MTC has a proposal out there to, uh, basically take over ABAG's land use responsibilities. Uh, in essence, MTC only approve ABAG's funding through the end of this calendar year, and they would have to reauthorize funding for the remainder of the year. And their thought pattern is, uh, the best way to do it is they could do, my words, not theirs, maybe ABAG's work more efficiently. I, I think the discussion point, at least in the staff analysis, is that for MTC, we think it's a rush process. We think they're really going through it too fast. They really should at least allocate the funding for the remainder of the fiscal year for ABAG, and then things could be studied in, in more of-depth analysis. I know the vice mayor may have some comments on that. The letter that's attached is the letter that Mill Valley sent to, uh, MTC.
Okay, Renee, do you want to provide a little more, or, or do you feel?
No, yeah, I just want to give a, a quick breakdown of how, how this is working. And I think, oh, sorry, address John's concern that, um, there hasn't been a lot of representation from the cities, nor really from, well, I shouldn't say this. So, Steve Kinsey is our representative on the board, um, of MTC. Pat Eklund is the representative of all of the Marin cities to the executive board of ABAG. There is no city representation on the MTC board. So, in, uh, in this recent, um, development, uh, what's happened is that the cities and, um, the cities have been completely left out of the conversation in how this is being determined. And as you see, um, from what's written in the letter, this expresses our concern, um, that this is moving too fast and we really haven't had any opportunity to, um, weigh in. And that, to me, is very much the truth of the situation. And Pat Eklund is working incredibly hard to get that representation, um, and to express our concerns to MTC. There is a Marin, um, ABAG delegates meeting on Monday, which unfortunately...
Um, it's the eighth, Renee. It's tomorrow.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, it's tomorrow. It was changed several times back and forth, and I was cleared to attend, and then it got changed. So, if anyone, Peter, could potentially attend that, but we can talk about that off, offline. Um, it is a very important meeting, and I will get briefed as to what, what happens. And, um, yeah, if you have any questions, I think that this represents what most of the cities are feeling. And I think, to be honest, after attending a five-hour meeting, uh, at the, the last MTC board meeting, it was very clear that the board was, um, needing to rethink this, at least to fund, um, through, through the end of not just this fiscal year, but through the year. Um, and it looked, and I, you know, this is from my eye, it looked as if that was the direction that, uh, that they were heading, and they were definitely hearing, uh, the ABAG employees who were basically begging for their jobs and, um, talking about what would be the repercussions of actually doing this consolidation without thinking about it.
Okay, well, um, if we back up a little bit, I mean, some of my, um, concerns are, you know, with this impending bureaucratic takeover of ABAG by MTC, it's probably worth backing up a little bit more than that. A lot of people, especially that are listening and not up-to-date on things, the ABAG now is different than the ABAG of several years ago, where a lot of people were planning, uh, complaining about ABAG kind of doing a top-down, um, like you're going to take our redesigning your community, um, uh, planning structure, kind of a top-down approach with some, you know, lip service, public input, which they didn't really pay much attention to. Um, that has changed, is my understanding, in that, you know, local representatives really got it, and ABAG really got it, and started paying attention to what people in the community were saying, which is how representative government is supposed to work. Um, now, we go not very far down the road, you know, a year, year and a half, or whatever, um, from that point, where this sea change in accountability or responsiveness to input from the community happens, and then MTC goes to ABAG and says, "Well, we're going to take over your planning functions, and because we can do it a lot more efficiently and a lot better, and, you know, we're kind of thinking about that kind of thing anyway." Well, MTC has very little, I mean, yes, we have Steve Kinsey as our representative at the county, and Pat Eklund is trying to get some more representation. And that's great. I wish her very well. But I have a problem with, you know, the, kind of an end run being gone around the, the representation of the, what the people's interests are. I mean, I, I, I think it's really important in a democracy to have, um, feedback and representation, so that, you know, you don't get, uh, one-size-fits-all solutions or any kind of solution kind of imposed upon local, um, decision-making. I mean, because that's what representative democracy is supposed to be about. And, um, ABAG's staff response to the MTC takeover has been like, "Well, we want to keep our jobs and make sure our pensions are right and stuff." And it was pretty much their reactions and objections were pretty much, you know, to protect the employees there, but not to protect the structure of representative government. And that's... And that's really what I think that the letter should have something to reflect.
Yeah, I hear your point, and maybe, Garrett, we will maybe look at a sentence in there, and how that might be represented. Although, I do want to say that what I've seen in A-BAG's response to the previous Plan Bay Area debacle, has been, has been really exemplary, in terms of how a regional agency listens to its shareholders, if you will.
Yeah, and that's great, and that's how it's supposed to work, and now we're getting a bait and switch, I mean, you know, A-BAG's getting pulled out, and the MTC's in there instead.
Well, but that's not exactly what's happening, that's what we're doing in supporting A-BAG, and slowing this down, and bringing our voices through A-BAG to MTC. It's a very interesting thing, in that we really did bash A-BAG to death in the previous round, and now we're fighting for its survival, because it is our local voice. So I think that Pat Eklund is on an excellent track, I will tell you, in leading us as Marin Cities, as much as we're willing to step up, which this is a small step in doing, we will have the opportunity to be represented at A-BAG as they work through this with MTC.
So maybe John could suggest a sentence or two to you, and you could put it in the letter, and then you could send it out.
I guess that's why we're here, isn't it?
I think that's a great idea, I would also say that, you know, because I was a previous delegate to A-BAG, I get a lot of stuff from the executive director of A-BAG, and there's a lot more than just worry about preserving jobs and pensions that may not have come across, but I would say this, is that I think John suggests a sentence, or in lieu of being able to suggest a sentence right now, Renee and Garrett work on adding a sentence, but I would have one quick suggestion to, number one, where it says, "Extend A-BAG planning services funding for the final six months to secure," et cetera. I think I would say, "Extend A-BAG planning services funding, comma, at a minimum for the final six months," which is, I think something was just said. But I'm not sure, I mean, I would just say this, I hear what you're saying, John, is it looks like people are worried about preserving their jobs, and not really the function of what A-BAG was about. I'm not sure that putting that in the letter, because the letter is directed at MTC, is gonna really help, but I think maybe what we're looking at is a sentence that says, "The purpose of A-BAG is to be that regional government organization that works closely," and we have seen kind of a sea-change in A-BAG's perspective, as far as working with the cities and towns in Marin. And so maybe that's really all you want to say, is something to that effect, is, "The reason we need A-BAG is because there are regional council of governments, and despite concerns on the past Bay Area, we've seen a scene change in trying to work closely and not have a top-down approach." Is that something along the lines of what you were thinking?
Yeah, and, you know, and to that end, we would encourage MTC to adopt those, you know, build those structures.
They will not, they will not.
Yeah, I know they will not, and that's what makes me very hesitant.
I think right now, to the extent that we're sending this letter, we take that stepwise approach of adding something along the lines of what I'm hearing you say, and then, should this all fall apart, then our next course of action is, what do we do to send letters to MTC to change their top-down approach, which has always been that way? So do you have a concept or a flavor of a sentence to add? I think you would want to add something in that second paragraph, to the extent of what A-BAG is about, and why we feel it's important to preserve its planning functions.
Maybe, Madam Mayor, a suggestion would be, maybe council member Reed and vice mayor Goddard could just work on it separately, in green language.
Question two, does the A-BAG planning department, are they involved in the RNHA numbers assessment?
Yes, they do.
Then I would also add that they have, you know, many years of experience and expertise.
I think you want to be very cautious about that, Peter, there are people who feel that their putting RHNA's on various cities and towns has not worked well. For example, Corder Madera, they made a mistake. So I don't think we want to get into the, my suggestion would be, do not get into the details, we see kind of a change in their approach, why we think they're important, so I think the idea of having John and Renee get together and figure out the right sentence is the right way to go.
Yeah, I just think MTC would be far less responsive in handling that function than A-BAG has, and A-BAG, you know, has received a lot of criticism, there's always gonna be some pushback, and some of that criticism is, you know, probably warranted, but I just, I anticipate MTC being a lot less responsive, but I hear your point on not including that in the letter, and I'm fine with not including that.
Yeah, in terms of specifics, yeah, I think we're on the same page, I mean, everybody agrees that MTC is not a responsive.
So let's, I think we've got direction to authorize the vice mayor to send the letter, with potentially my change, which was small, and then John and Renee getting together and figuring out that one sentence, and then, I guess we shoot that off. Do we need to vote on this?
I think you just need to make a motion, that as you indicated, that you would authorize vice mayor and council member Reed.
Who would like to make that motion, David, you're sitting there, let's do it.
I'll make the motion that the letter as drafted with the addition that the mayor suggested, and the addition of one or two sentences that clarify the point that John raised, be included, and that the council authorize the vice mayor to sign and send that letter.
I would second that.
Own favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Moved on, now we're at, now we're at item 12. Garrett, how about a brief staff report?
Sure, so item 12 is discussing the financing of town infrastructure through low-interest capital loans from other governmental agencies. Really, as background, we've been working with a resident off of Canyon Road, looking for grants to try to repair the retaining road on Canyon Road, and we ran across two financing programs. One's from the U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development Loans, and the other's from the California Infrastructure Bank. These are low-interest loans, depends on the rate, it's about 4% now, they can be repaid over 20, 40 years, a lot of other conditions vary between the programs, but in essence, they can be used for infrastructure, such as roads and other things a town thinks appropriate. However, similar to LED lights, staff just wanted to get direction from the council as to whether or not this is a good thing to further explore, just because we didn't want to talk to the different agencies and figure things out until we had a better idea. So one thing to keep in mind is, the town has issued before general obligation bonds for infrastructure improvements, but that was $6 million. And so we're not talking about that level, it's a much lower level, probably more around the, probably around $400,000, give or take. And so, how that's different is that typically our approach to budgeting has pay-as-you-go. If we get grant funding, we'll go with that project, we'll save up, or whatever money we get for Measure A transportation, we'll use that money in that year. What this does, obviously, if you finance your infrastructure, is you could actually do things sooner, rather than later, and presumably, the interest rate on your loan is much less than the cost of inflation for construction over time. So what we did was, examples, we tossed out a few projects, so one was the Canyon Road retaining wall, and the other was the reconstruction of Tamal Pius and Mountain View roads. The reason we selected Tamal Pius, it is an arterial, it is in the worst condition of our arterials, and we selected Mountain View, because Mountain View, in essence, is sort of an alternate route on Tamal Pius, and we thought those would be good, and the other thing to point out is PG&E did agree to contribute $50,000 toward reconstruction because of their pipeline project, and so that'd be a good leveraging of funds. For Canyon Road, we still, we're exploring that right now with a geotech firm, we have no idea what the level of repair, what that will even take. But that being said, we estimate the road reconstruction for Tamal Pius and Mountain View, it's about 1,600 linear feet combined, will cost, let's call it, we said 270, let's call it 300,000. Canyon Road, we have no idea, but if you use a number of 100,000, which it could vary, but you could use it for other things, you come up with a number of about 400,000, based on the 30-year term, that, and the interest rates, it's probably closer to somewhere between 23,000 and 25,000 a year that you would have to repay. But, that being said, those are merely recommendations by staff, council can always choose other projects. Obviously, the main question tonight is whether or not you'd like us to pursue more information regarding these programs, and then come back to you with a little more detail of how they would work.
Just a point of clarification, I think you mentioned to me that you were, at the time, also looking for grant programs, and there were no grant programs that were available, but you did find out about these financing, that's correct, right?
Oops, thanks for pointing it out, yes, we were looking for grants, we discovered that the projects we were proposing, which are mainly road-type improvements, retaining walls, they weren't eligible for any grants, but we came across two loan programs.
Okay, so opening up, John, you have a question, comment?
Yeah, and I guess, well, first off, generally, with a loan, you have collateral, what's, is that the case in these, with these specialized loans?
We would be figuring that out, how that works. Generally, for an infrastructure bank, of my experience, I think with the loan repayment, I don't recall you having to, like, use a women's club as collateral, but that's something that'd be explored, because I'm just, council, you need to figure that out.
Important, and, because the main thing, you know, I'm thinking the Measure K bonds that we use to fix our roads, and this is a big problem around town, and I'm sure that if we borrow some money to fix these two road projects, everybody's gonna go, "Well, what about my street?" It needs, you know, basically, we financed a bunch of road resurfacing with Measure K bonds, you know, unfortunately, the roads are gonna wear out in about half of the time that the bonds are gonna take to repay, you know, that's about, and, you know, which is a problem. I mean, we have roads that are getting worse, some of them are pretty bad already, and as we have been shown, if you pay a little bit now to, you know, keep your roads in pretty good shape, then, you know, a little bit down the road, you have to pay, you know, you don't have to pay a huge bill, I mean, basically, it really makes sense to, it's like keeping your teeth happy, you know, you fix the cavities early, and you don't have to, and brush your teeth, you know, you don't have to get crowns in the next few years. Anyway, strange analogy.
Yeah, I don't have any cavities.
Yeah, well, but you get the general idea, I'm just trying to use that analogy, because it really does come to that, and really, we have, in terms of our infrastructure around town, we have a number of things that tend to be kicked down the road, but really, if we're gonna be responsible here, we're gonna have to take good care of our roads, so that we don't have to pay huge amounts down the road. And really, I would like to kind of look at an analysis of this loan approach versus the bond approach that we've used in the past.
So we can do that, but you remember, your bond approach, that takes a vote of the voters, because those were general obligation bonds, so you weren't pledging your buildings, but you were pledging your prop, general fund, property taxes, sales taxes.
That's true, and, you know, I mean, it's a multifaceted thing, but in terms of, how much are we paying, you know, that would be good to have that information.
Yeah, so we can explore that, but I can, we're pretty sure right now, you're not gonna do, most likely, a bond issue for 400,000, the issuance costs, we'd have to try to piggyback with someone, it wouldn't be cost-effective, but if you want us to explore a larger bond issue, we can do that.
Let's, on one thing, would you say that most of the project of a road repair is asphalt?
Sure.
Okay, oil will never be this cheap again. Asphalt is oil, now's the time to do it, if we're gonna do it, otherwise, it's just gonna go up in cost, so let's spend the money now, if you, if, after careful consideration and deliberation, if these projects are essential, then, I don't know if this was you or somebody else on staff that came up with this, but this is a brilliant short-term funding mechanism.
Well, what we did, just as a background, Tamal Pius was actually in your CIP for a road to actually be prepared, constructed with Measure A funds, but we had to reallocate that to the Manzanita Slide Repair. So Tamal Pius was always there, we pushed it off because we were waiting for PG&E to complete their work. Mountain View wasn't necessarily on it, but we just believe with the arterial and Mountain View's route, it probably makes sense, especially since PG&E is willing to kick in money for both roads.
I believe you mentioned, I remember the pavement plan, which I still have a copy of, that Tamal Pius was on the top of that list, so this isn't willy-nilly, but I think Garrett's also saying, this is just example he's putting in, so, other questions?
Just a quick question, so with how things have been moving, based on the model that you said we generally tend to work under, how long would it take to, approximately, to get this Tamal Pius project going, were we not to apply for this kind of, or to borrow this?
If you assume you get 80,000 a year, plus or minus, for Measure A funds, and you allocated that to street improvements, and if you went with 400,000, that's five years' worth of Measure A funds.
What else would we spend it on? So in a sense, you're saying we're borrowing against the future Measure A funds, that's the collateral for the loan. What else would we spend it on?
Oh, Measure A funds? Oh, no, we have to spend on transportation, well, yeah.
There's a laundry list, and don't you remember, we fought over the money list?
Okay, Peter?
Yeah, so, what are, it says the disadvantages the town would incur long-term debt, the interest rate, is that competitive with, you know, the bonds, what would be paying on bonds?
Tax-exempt financing, it's different than these load programs. Right now, on our Measure K bonds, it's a variable rate, right now, I think it's, it looks like it's about 2.5% right now, that's what we're paying on the tax-exempt bonds. Obviously, what we would be paying on this loan program is, you know, it'd be probably around 4%, but it's also a much smaller amount.
Right, but it'd be fixed, and just conceptually, too, that the bond financing rates could go up, depending on the market.
Correct, they can, under the variable rate. I believe, you can probably do a fixed rate, but then that's, there's a lot of other things involved with that.
So for budgeting purposes, I guess we have to just be mindful of how much we've borrowed in a given year, and how much of our budget in years one through 30, these are 30-year loans, roughly?
There's, they vary from, I think, 20 to 40 years, but you're correct, what we would end up doing is a long-term debt, similar to the budget, we have a debt service fund for Measure K, we would create the same thing for this loan, so you would be able to see it each year in the budget, and that, obviously, it's an obligation, so we can't forget it. So it just would be a separate section.
Right, so you'd set up like a fund, or a budget line item, okay, we gotta set aside $24,000 for this loan in our budgeting process.
That's not what you said two minutes ago, if I understood correctly. You said that we get 80K in Measure A, we borrow 400,000, we pay it off in five years.
You can do that, I wasn't proposing that, but that's an option, you could prepay the loan.
But the beauty of what you're basically saying is, we can identify a problem, we can fix it now, and we can pay it off in a reasonable, very reasonable, short period of time, with a, hopefully, a low-interest rate, from dedicated funds, that we know that are gonna arrive. Boy, if that isn't having your parents take you into the candy shop.
So I just want to add, okay, so I want to just, you know, let's remember we're at 20 to 11, I think this is one thing I think to look into, should we pursue this, and I think it's another tool in our toolbox, I think it's great, and I think we should also look into the possibility of prepayment penalties.
Oh, there's a prepayment penalty?
You never know.
There are no.
There are none, okay, well then, that's great. So my suggestion is, it seems like we should go forward and look at this, why not? It's another tool in our toolbox, with a 30-year loan, and- It's another tool in our toolbox, with a thirty-year loan, and twenty-three to twenty-five thousand a year, which we can budget for, and maybe pay for much sooner. It's great, we might be able to get some of these bigger projects done, and I just wanna remind folks that next year, we'll be having to renew our sales tax measure, so there is no possibility, I think, of floating a bond at the same time. Not that that's a bad idea, but I still look at those bond repayments every time in the budget, and think, how long are we gonna be paying this off?
See, a long time. It's on the tax bill.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a long time, and we have to go before the voters, and I agree that this is a good tool in our toolbox, but I think it's important also to look, just as a yardstick, on what the bond approach would, you know, mean in terms of, you know, the costs going forward. You know, I, I agree, it's good, I mean, to the point where, if it's a good thing, let's look at this in terms of, we have a number of streets, which are, their scores are dropping precipitously, and if we act now, we can save ourselves a lot of money in the future. So, it might be a wise way to use the public's money.
So, it sounds like the direction to staff is, let's continue to pursue this. I think there's a strong request to get some analysis of comparison to bond debt, and it sounds great, and we appreciate you, I think you sat through a number of webinars to figure this out, so very much appreciate that.
Good job.
Thank you. I think you've been very resourceful, and we really appreciate you looking for all these opportunities for us. All right, moving on to number thirteen. Garrett, I think this is a quickie, because this is our second reading.
Usually, the town clerk does the staff reports for second readings, but I'll do it for her.
She prefers not to.
Yes. She looks like she's on top of it. Anyway, it's waiving, it's waiving the second reading, read by title only, of the ordinance, number seven nine four, which basically has to do with small residential rooftop solar and renewable energy systems. At your September second meeting, the council introduced and held the first reading of the ordinance. If you adopt the second reading, it'll take effect thirty days from tonight.
Okay, questions of council? Remember, this is the second reading, so questions of council? Seeing none? Oh, seeing none?
I just wanted to comment that, you know, I, I supported not bifurcating this before, but I, you know, coming before us in a bifurcated fashion, I support getting this part of it passed, so.
Thank you. I wanna open it up to public comment. Seeing none? Our town clerk, at times, have weighed in on public comment. Bringing it back to the council, I would like to entertain a motion. David, I see your finger on that button.
Sure, I move that we waive second reading, and read by title only, and adopt ordinance seven ninety-four, adding Title II to chapter seventeen point one thirty-eight of the Town Code, Small Residential Rooftop Solar Renewable Energy Systems, to provide a permitting process for small residential rooftop solar energy systems.
And I will second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number thirteen, and I think we have a supplemental on this, too. Oh, fourteen, thank you, number fourteen.
Okay, so, you may recall, back in August fifth, the council actually first considered ordinance number seven nine four, which you just adopted as the second reading. At that time, a suggestion was made by council that the ordinance had a provision there, where solar checklists and standard plans were attached to the ordinance, and the suggestion was, it should, we should change that to make it that council, by resolution, can approve the checklist and the standard plans. And so, this resolution before you tonight actually does that. It actually has a checklist, references the checklist and the solar, standard solar plans, adopted by resolution. The supplemental staff report, actually, what it contains is, it contains three pages that we didn't attach to the original resolution. That's the information bulletin. We staffed and deemed that to actually be a standard plan or a checklist, but, that being said, I think it's fine for consistency purposes and for clarification purposes, because it is missing three pages, that the council can go ahead and just, when you, assuming you adopt the resolution, you just include, just make sure you direct staff that to include those three pages, and then you would adopt the whole checklist and standard plans, along with the information bulletin. And lastly, I should point out, the resolution does allow staff to make modifications to those documents, to ensure that it is in conformance with the state's, what is it, the state's California Solo Permitting Guidebook, just to ensure that it's always conformity to state guidelines, and that's the staff report.
Thank you, Garrett. Questions of staff?
I just, real quickly, I'm, I'm just looking at the checklist, the three-page that you're talking about, and there's multiple suggestions that are written in italics on here, and with recommendations. So, how, will we look into any of the, there, there are recommendations that talk about how we work with submittals, and...
So, I'm sorry, I should've touched on that. So, as clarification, the, the one reason that we did not include it, is because our information bulletin would be one page, if that.
Oh, perfect.
This is, like, three pages, you fill in the blanks, and it was like, oh, my goodness, but to reduce any confusion, I think, I think it's a good suggestion that you go ahead and include that with the origin, with the resolution you're adopting, and the staff will make all the modifications as needed, including the information bulletin, we'll actually just do our version. That will comply with state standards, but will be much simpler.
I'm really glad to hear that.
Okay, so, seeing no for the questions, opening up to public comment. I see none, I'll bring it back to the council. David, would you like to make a recommendation?
Sure.
Or a, a motion?
I'll move that the council adopt Resolution fifteen dash, next in order, adopting the checklist and the standard plans pursuant to section seventeen point one thirty-eight point two five oh, processing a small residential rooftop solar energy system, applications of ordinance number seven ninety-four, and including the three pages that were provided in the supplemental staff report of October seventh.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to number fifteen. Garrett, would you like to do the staff report, please?
Sure, the, this is the item that waives the second reading, and read by title only, and adopt ordinance seven nine five, which basically amended the chapter related to public bidding. You may recall, at your September second meeting, when we first introduced the ordinance, council had a discussion, made several comments and suggestions, and this second reading actually reflects all the comments and suggestions that council had made at that time, specifically, we kind of adjusted what the threshold amounts were. So, with that, that concludes the staff report.
Just reminding council that we're on the second reading, question, Renee?
No, I was going to make a motion.
I think we have to open it up to public comment, unless, so, any public comment? Seeing none, bringing it back to council, would you like to make a motion?
Would love to. So, I would move to waive the second reading, and read by title only, and adopt ordinance number seven nine five of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, amending chapter three point three six, public bidding of the Fairfax Town Code to increase contract award limits as specifically set forth in section three point three six point zero two zero.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to council member reports. I will start with, start with Peter. Are you ready?
Uh, it's not quite ready.
Okay, we could start with David.
Um, generally, I focus on flow zone stuff, but we had a robust discussion with county staff, the supervisor. This evening, I just wanted to reinform the public and the council about the Klaus Park project. I believe, the last time we met, I informed everybody that the contractors had come in, and had removed all of the vegetation except for the trees, and that, at this point, Garrett is working, both with an outside contractor, but if that doesn't work, to use town staff to lay out or roll out the cardboard, which will then be covered with some sort of mulch or bark, which will sit on the park for some period of, for, let's say, four, five, six months, until everything underneath it is extinguished appropriately, and then we will use that time to plan the modest improvements to the park itself, with some water-wise plantings, and the use of benches and tables that are senior-oriented, as I think Renee suggested some months ago, and in collaboration with Jody Timms, of course, the community that I keep regularly informed through email. So, that's on that project. Do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Okay. The thing that I would rather spend a few moments on is, I, I do wanna highlight, and I'm hoping, I know it's, it's late, and probably most of our seniors are asleep, but on the...
Some of us are here.
Yeah, I, I know. I'm certainly nodding off, as I approach the golden years. On the, boy, was it the nineteenth, I think it was, of September, both our volunteers, Jody and the Focus folks, held, I think stunningly, good senior fair. There were two dozen vendors, extremely knowledgeable folks, informing the community about the range of, of options and services that are available to seniors. I know a number of the seniors in, in my neighborhood stopped by, and I spoke with them, and they said it was incredibly informative. If I had to just pick one, the one I told my folks about was, we pay a little tax on our phone bill all the time, and as a result, seniors can get free phones, if their, their hearing is, is beginning to fade, or if their eyesight is not as good. There was a whole range of, of phone options that are available to them entirely free. And, and the, the list of, of services that we provide here, while never enough and insufficient, is, is pretty good. And so, I would say to any seniors who might be watching, or however this goes out to you, that, you know, certainly, just because you might not have been able to attend this, doesn't mean that we can't inform you. I know that Jody would be, I hate to speak for her, but any of us would be very happy to, to help out, and I certainly have, you know, collected something from everybody to, you know, give a more personalized briefing, if you will. But, I, I really, really wanna thank Jody and that team for putting this together. It was extraordinary, and I think, like most Fairfax things, you do it one year, and then you do it, and you do, and you know, it becomes inculcated into the culture of the community, people look forward to it. Even more vendors will show up, and kudos to these folks for putting this together.
Can I just briefly interject? I have a long list of people to thank.
Oh, please.
And I would like to do that. I was there mostly the whole time, and I know Ann Manus, our recreation manager, also said to me that they would like to do another one in the spring. So, the senior fair was an incredible event. Thank you, David, for bringing that up. I wanna thank a number of folks, and then we'll move on to John's report. The organizers, the Task Force for Age-Friendly Fairfax, Jody Timms, our own Ann Manus, Anna Schandler, Francie, Francie Berger, Beddinger, oh, it's not spelled right, Chris Bertolucci, Tim Heath, Heath, thank you. Vendors who manned the table during the event, Marin Transit, Whistlestop, Ross Valley Seniors, and I'm thanking all these folks, the Fairfax Volunteers, Human Health Services, Aging and Adult Services, CalFresh and County Services, the Alzheimer's Association, Marin Center for Independent Living, who we've had speak here, Marin Sanitary Service, the Fairfax Library, the California Telephone Access Program, CTAP, and actually, she's gonna be here speaking in a couple of months. I, I went around and asked people to come speak. Golden Years Medical, Ross Valley Villages, which in Ross Valley is virtual, and they are gonna be speaking soon, I've asked them to come speak. We've had Marin Home Care Collective, Home Share, Lily Pad Homes, and she has spoken at our planning commission. Tamela Smith, who's our chair yoga instructor, Fairfax Recreation, our own town organization, Age-Friendly Fairfax, and the Marin Humane Society. I also wanna thank Taste Catering, who brought pastries and other treats, Good Earth, who contributed gift cards, Rose Tabor walked in with Rainbow Fabrics gift cards. Yeah, she, that was great. Fairfax Lumber provided succulents, and some other donations for the event. We had music and entertainment. My neighbor, Don Oldman, brought a series of accompaniments, they do what's called ukulele porch singing. And there were many others who helped out. That day, Silver Clark spent the whole day helping out, and from the Fairfax volunteers, Holly Bragman and Gio Taylor. So, we got a long list, and I'm, I'm hoping I haven't left somebody off, but it was a wonderful event, and I think doing it again would be a great idea. So, John, you wanna move on to your report?
Sure. Yeah, every time I try to prepare this, I go through my list of all the meetings in the last month. There's sixteen of them, it's kinda...
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, and, anyway, ask my wife who showed up with their dog.
I do, but why they're up more than seventeen?
Yeah. Okay, so, anyway, I am not gonna go through a laundry list of all these things, but, let me see, I guess, some of the things that were, well, one of the things that was kind of enjoyable to go to, there's, Sustainable Fairfax has organized some educational walks, and will be doing more in the future around various trails, which is close to my heart. And one of them, my foot is still recovering from being broken, so I couldn't take the actual walk, but I got to go at the beginning and meet about fifteen people that were all going on up Power Lane and down the forest terrace steps, and then up another one and down, and, you know, it was strenuous, I'm sure, and I wished I could've gone on it, but it was great to see all the people going there, and be able to talk to them ahead of time. Let me see, I also went to the Chamber Mixer, and volunteers' meetings, things like that, and of course, the Transportation Authority. I went also, and put some time in with the Gardeners Alliance, which they are having another workday coming up.
It's October eleventh.
October eleventh, yeah, I think that's about right. And this is basically taking people interested in gardening, or, you know, just beautifying their town, and, and basically, these are the strips along Center Boulevard, that the soil there is kind of a mixture of ground-up rocks and gravel. I mean, it's not even really soil, and so, basically, what the Gardeners Alliance is attempting to do with volunteer labor is break some of that up and add a whole lot of organic matter, so that we can have some plants that actually don't spend most of their time withering and dying in this very central part of our downtown. And it's all volunteer labor, we're using the, the money that was going to pay for somebody to go and trim these dying plants, three hours a week, we're using that for materials and irrigation supplies and things like that. Anyway, the public is welcome to join the next Gardeners Alliance workday. It's actually, you know, it's kind of, you know, it's backbreaking work, but it's, it's fun. It's fun to contribute to your town in that way. Several Safe Roads to Schools meeting, including what was a phenomenal thing today, which was International Walk and Roll to School Day, that we had a huge number of kids and parents showing up, and it was really heart-wrenching in some ways, because it was in Deb Hubsmith's hometown, the first one of those that she did not go to, really, because she passed recently, and it's a loss to the whole community, to the whole country, because Safe Roads is to school, as we know, was started here, and it's a nationwide program now, because of her efforts, among many other things, but she really was the driving force there. And so, she was commemorated appropriately with a picture of her at the head of that parade today, so.
Yeah, and we should send out a thanks to, to our, our police department, and the fire department, who escorted us down, and to see Chief Moran at the corner of, of Sir Francis Drake, and...
At the library there, and it's just like...
And streams a hundred and fifty-plus kids, and people riding their bikes joyfully, and traffic backed up all the way to White Hill, I'm sure, and all the drivers waving and smiling. It was a, it was a beautiful thing to be home.
Yeah, it was good. And, so, that's... And so that's the end of my report, pretty much, that I'll put out there because you don't need to hear about all that.
Okay, thank you, John. All right, let's move on to Renee.
Yeah, it was definitely a busy, busy month. I have a bunch of scribble here. But we... I did make a few minutes of the senior fair, and so I think I'll talk a little bit about the other end of the spectrum of life here, and that is the youth. I know that there was an open house for our youth center, our community center, and I think the grand total that was brought in from people who went to the open house and joined the club was like $1,000, the first pop, and that was an excellent start. And there's a new coordinator who is also working with Roots to Branches, who hopefully will build this program. Slow-starting, but I think we have a new generation and changes with the families that come through. So that was a good place to start. And then if you want to jump directly into teenagers, which is where it tends to go rather quickly, from middle to teens, I've been doing a lot of work with the Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative, and there's been a strong focus on marijuana and the excessive marijuana use that is going on in our community. Drake High School topping the charts in terms of youth use and abuse. There was an event called Weed 101 at Redwood High School that over 300 people attended that was cosponsored by the collaborative, and talking about legislation, all the ins and outs about the legalization of pot, shedding light on some of the things that we don't often hear about, that we will be hearing a lot about, but mostly educating people, parents, as to what's going on in terms of what is this marijuana that our kids are smoking, vaping, and doing all kinds of other things to extract high levels of THC and is causing some problems that we hadn't seen before in the past. So there's a lot of information. The county hosted a whole-day event called Marin 420 at the County Office of Education, and I spent the day, so two days of really learning about what we're dealing with, and it's going to be really important for us all to get educated as this comes down the pike next year. And other event around cyber safety that took place at White Hill, and this collaborative is really working hard to bring parents and kids to the education table so that both are empowered with information and communication can then begin some of the cyber safety details, facts, and figures of what's happening with our kids online. And cyber safety has become a high-profile, very important thing to learn about. So talk with your kids about their screen time and look out for more of the Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative events. And just real quick, let me just make sure there wasn't something that popped out. And yeah, I know, I think that's a good place to stop. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Renee. Peter?
Let's see, I attended the Ross Valley Fire District Meeting in lieu of David's attendance, and that was my first meeting.
Did you enjoy it? Could you get to go to the next one?
I... Okay. I enjoyed it so much, I'll check my calendar. I think I'm available, but yeah, it was good. It was good to get an overview of how the district works and dealing with salary increase issues and so forth, and getting a very sobering assessment of the fire danger that we're looking at here. So that was good. Good introduction to that board. Attended a subcommittee meeting today for the Zero Waste Subcommittee, and more on that, we have a meeting on Monday, so Monday, 7 o'clock here, to discuss our efforts to achieve zero waste for the Town of Fairfax. Is it 6:00 or 7:00?
6:00.
6:00, okay, I'm sorry, 6:00 o'clock. Also attended the MCCM meeting, and that's always interesting. Learned all about the food cooking craze that's on the internet. Had a very interesting guest, one of these celebrity chefs. And then I also attended a CERT training on September 17 at the library, which I really recommend...
That was actually Get Ready.
Oh, was that Get Ready?
Get Ready is different.
And very, very informative, very sobering, and a lot of really good information about what everyone should do just to prepare themselves and their family and their home for a disaster and just to be able to get out in time, get what's important, make sure that everyone's taken care of in an emergency like that. And so I really recommend that for anyone, and that's also very sobering, especially in light of the valley fire that just happened in Clear Lake. So thank you.
Thank you. Just briefly on the... I did the kind of welcome speech at the Get Ready class, which I want to thank Margaret, our branch manager, Margaret Miles, who's also a Fairfax resident, our Fairfax resident, Cindy Swift, who's also our CERT coordinator for Fairfax, and also our trainer, Maggie Lang. She's a CERT county coordinator and the Get Ready coordinator for the county. We are interested in trying to do another one, but one of the things Maggie has stretched pretty thin, so she's looking for other people to learn how to do the class, which she said is very easy, and, you know, you just do it with her one time and you can pick it up. So hopefully, people out there are listening, but it's only an hour and a half, and it really gets you started on what we all need to do. And that class had something like 10 on the waiting list. People dropped in. It was really well-attended. So I did a couple of ribbon cuttings, our new Village Sake, and also the ribbon cutting for the Lotus Cafe patio, so two kind of newer things to do in town. Met with the Chamber of Commerce, also did the... Attended the Chamber Mixer, which was at the Lotus. The Countywide Public Disaster and Emergency Preparedness Meeting, that's where I get a lot of these ideas for things to bring, and that's where I kind of got Get Ready going. I attended an all-day Marin Clean Energy Retreat and Board Meeting, and also the Fairfax Senior Fair, I think I was there pretty much the whole time. Attended the Community Media Center of Marin Board Meeting. These are the folks who televise our meetings. Also attended the Spirit of Marin Awards, and want to congratulate Sustainable Fairfax, Jen Hammond, Renee Goddard, and Jen Jones. That was a great event. Again, the MCE Inclusion Committee, looking at policy issues about adding other cities and towns outside of Marin. And also yesterday, we had our Fairfax Disaster Council Meeting, so stay tuned, folks. I think you'll be looking at an updated emergency operation plan we'll probably have as an informational item at the next meeting, so that's going well. I just want to say another thing about Deb Hubbs Smith. I attended the dining with the Democrats a couple of weeks ago, and they gave an award to Deb, you know, posthumously, and Andy, five and a half weeks after her passing, did just a wonderful speech on, you know, just how much she's contributed, which everybody knew in the room, but it was really heartwarming. So with that, let's move on to our town manager report.
So really briefly, I think you all know that we finished repaving the basketball court here at the women's club, so it's restripped, repaved. I believe we will receive the new backboard next week, and then when we get that, then we'll install it as soon as we can. And then since daylight savings time is ending, wanted to point out that the tennis court lights, per the Park Commission's policy, are allowed to be on up to 9:00 PM, but we will be letting people know that after 6:00 PM, they can't use the automatic ball machines because of the noise. But wanted to let the community know the lights will be on until 9:00 PM if someone's using the court. And that concludes the town manager report.
Thank you. And so with that, we're going to adjourn this... We're opening to the special meeting, but we have to adjourn the regular meeting, and we're adjourning our meeting in honor of... In memory of Mr. Stephen Carter, who was tragically killed outside of Fairfax. And so maybe just a minute, half a minute in his memory, and then we'll move on to our special meeting. Thank you, everyone. So now we'd like to convene the special Fairfax Town Council meeting, and it's about 11:15. Call to order, do we need to do a roll call? No. We're all here. And do I need a motion to approve the agenda? David?
I move to approve the agenda and affidavit poster.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and Garrett, would you like to do the item briefly?
Briefly, what do... What the item before the council is authorizing the town manager, texting an agreement with Marin County Flood Control and Water Conservation District, Marin County, for the town to be reimbursed up to $65,000 for out-of-pocket costs related to the Azalea Bridge project. So briefly, Azalea Bridge is in our five-year CIP, it's in the current year, 1516. It's also identified as a baseline measure, as they pointed out at the Flood District Meeting, which means that it is eligible for up to 30% reimbursement of costs for the project. Now, the project is almost 100% funded by state and federal funds. However, there are some costs such as SEQA and some project manager costs that are not covered, and so what the district will be doing is allowing the town to be reimbursed for those out-of-pocket costs. Those costs shouldn't be more than $65,000. We're pretty sure they won't be $65,000, but just to be safe, that's what the amount is for. Estimated design environmental is about $710,000, so out-of-pocket would be 65, that's what would be reimbursed by. And the reason that this is in front of you this evening is that the Board of Supervisors plans to approve this agreement, I believe, at their November 17 meeting, but they have a little lead time, and so they wanted us to approve it first before it would go to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, questions of the council?
Just a quick question. How do we determine or how is it determined what baseline measure is? So why would the Azalea Bridge be that versus...
So how they do it is briefly, it's in the 10-year work plan for the Flood District, and when it's in the 10-year work plan, that means it's a higher priority than all the other projects within the 25-year plan. And what this does is, this bridge is in there because what it is, it acts as a barrier to some of the water. So what happens with the replacement, it reduces that barrier, and plus, one of the main things is it's 100% funded almost by grant funds. So for a project that may end up costing $2 million, the district only has to put in about 65 if that.
You would know that had you reviewed the hundreds of thousands of pages.
Which you have reviewed. We could have had you answer that question.
You would notice if you did see the list that most of the other bridges are in San Anselmo, coupled in Ross, and that's where the major impediments are. Our major impediment is that bridge. That's why it's getting paid for in part by the Flood District.
Thank you. John?
Well, though I should add that the bridge just upstream from it is compromised, and it's now about seven to eight feet wide on the bottom, and the whole reason why, according to our bridge guide, that it's not on there is it started out too narrow. So it's also an impediment, just to have to state that for the record. It's neither here nor there on the issue in front of us.
Thank you.
But it'd be great. I mean, this is going to be a problem for the town down the road, and I'd love to find a creative way to try to get that funded.
So another webinar, Garrett, to look at a creative way to fund that bridge. Okay, and other questions? I see none. We have two members of the public here tonight. Would any members of the public like to speak on this matter? Well, I see Bongo is not interested in speaking on the matter. All right. Well, thank you, Joe. Bringing it back to the council, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve an agreement with the Marin County Flood Control and Water Conservation District for the town to be reimbursed for out-of-pocket environmental and project management costs associated with the Azalea Avenue Bridge replacement project.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So with that, we're adjourning. Thank you, everyone.